Sure, Mr. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Mr. Muschak?
Here.
Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
And Mr. Schulman?
Here.
You had performed.
Okay. With that, the first item on the agenda is review and actions on applications. We have 2022-28 SPR 32 Knight Street. Proposed exterior and interior renovations of building with medical office tenants. This is a preliminary review, so I'm going to ask that the presenters keep the presentation to 15 minutes or less. This is for us a fairly straightforward action. I'm going to ask the commission after the presentation to approve a peer review for this project. So it's not necessary to go into enormous and highly specific detail on the project. With that, I would invite the developer or the developer's representative to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. For the record, my name is Vincent Hines, licensed engineer with Redness and Mead, having offices down in Stamford in Woburn. With me tonight are architectural team from NBH Architecture and the ownership group from Selixon Properties. As the chairman just said, we're here really for an initial presentation, you know, we're starting our multi-departmental review for proposed site development activities at 32 Knight Street, which is the former location of Lillian August, and I'd like to share my screen here now. So are you guys seeing the map on the page?
Yes, we can see it.
Yep, so 32 Knight Street, like I said, former Lillian August site, down by North Avenue Route 1. Mixed uses along the eastern and southern boundaries and Knight Street on the west. And I mentioned that's Pon Brook runs through the site on the east, only to, only so that you know that we have a concurrent application with the inland wetland agency. And we'll give an initial presentation to the Conservation Commission next Tuesday in the night. And then, as I was saying, we're we're here for the initial setup. The property is within the Central Business District and at the outskirts of the Wall Street West Avenue redevelopment area. And as such, the site plan review requires third-party review, peer review. So we're here tonight to kind of gain authorization of that third-party proposal so that that review can begin and we can kind of coordinate with them and staff on any comments that come up. So a little bit more background. The owner is in contract with a medical office tenant, so they're looking to do an adaptive reuse of a portion of the building that is out there today with demolition of the approximately 50% of the building occurring. And in its place, we would have the remaining chunk, the medical office tenant space. And then, site work would include adequate parking and drives for these. And then, as you're aware, you know, additional review will include referrals to DPW, the WPCA and TMP. And again, the concurrent application to the Wetlands Agency. With that, I really like to keep it simple as we want to move forward on the third-party proposal. And if there's any questions or any further feedback from ownership at this point, I'll leave the floor open.
Questions from commissioners? Is it your intention to maintain this as a one-story building?
Yes, yeah, so as part of this, we will, the footprint of the remaining portion will remain one-story, but we will be having some architectural penetrations, exterior facade improvements to kind of bulk up the look of it to get it closer to the look and feel of a two-story building, which is kind of the minimum requirement in the CBD zone.
Any other questions from commission members? If not, does that conclude your presentation?
Yeah, I'd love to save, like I said, this is the initial presentation, so I'd love to save the bulk review of the, all the more minor, all the more major details and minutia for the, our next meeting before you.
That sounds fine. Appreciate that. Can I have a motion to approve sending this for peer review?
Go move.
Okay, Richard moves, Tammy seconds. Any comment? If not, all those in favor, I think we can do this with a show of hands. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, it's approved unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you all very much.
The, just to be clear, the peer review is approved unanimously, not the project.
That's right.
That would have been good news for the applicant, just in case somebody dialed in late.
Right. Brian, do we know to which of the reviewers this will be going?
Yeah, we reached out to BFJ, who partners with Perkins Eastman, so they're starting to get turning on it.
Okay, that's fine. All right, next item, we have a series of public hearings this evening. To try and get through them as expeditiously as we can, but also allow everyone an opportunity to, who wishes to, to speak to these items. The first is 2022-16 SP Schoolhouse Academy, Inc., 32 Weed Avenue, proposed pre-kindergarten through grade 12 private school. This is a continuation of a public hearing that we conducted. The rules that we set when we closed out the meeting were that anyone who has already spoken on this matter will not be permitted to speak again unless new material is presented. And they may then speak only regarding the new material. For, for members of the public who wish to speak, who have not spoken before, they may speak about the project as they wish. The way in which we proceed with these public hearings is typically, there will first be a presentation by the developer or representative of the developer. Commission members will have an opportunity to ask any questions they want during that time. After that, we will open it to the public. We do not put time constraints on your presentation, but we, we do ask that while raising any issues you want, that you, you do it as expeditiously as possible so that everybody has an opportunity to speak. Perhaps not while it's still daylight, but without, without going into the early, early hours. Should the meeting run too long, we will have to stop it and continue it at our, at our next meeting. We ask that people who wish to speak simply speak courteously. Again, no requirement on how long you speak. However, if you're simply repeating what others have said without any new information, we would ask that you keep that as, as brief as possible. Once all the members of the public who wish to speak have had an opportunity, we will turn it back to the developer's representative for any comments that she wishes to make. We will then close the hearing and depending on whether we have open issues, we, we have the option of taking action this evening or deferring action if we feel we need more information. With that, I'll turn it over to Attorney Sachi, who I believe is representing the applicant.
That is correct, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. For the record, my name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at the law firm of Carmody, Torrent, Sandec, and Hennessy, 1055 Washington Boulevard in Stamford. Also present this evening are Carlo Ciattarella and Andrew McLaughlin. They are co-founders of Schoolhouse. Michael Galanti, Director of Traffic for Hardisty and Hanover, and Steve Sapola of Hardisty and Hanover are traffic consultants, along with Steve Grasso of PF Architects, the interior architectural planning and designer. Hang on one second, I apologize. Just give me one second to get rid of that. I apologize. Sorry about that. Problem with working from home. Just a brief recap of where we were last month, so that those who may be new as attendees and members of the public. An application for special permit for a private school to occupy the buildings and grounds at 32 Weed Avenue was submitted in March. Neighbors were notified of the submission by certificate of mailing on March 25th. Neighbors were also notified of the public hearing, which commenced on June 28th, and those neighbor notices were sent by certified mail on June 16th. The applicant is Schoolhouse Academy for a location at 32 Weed Avenue, District 5, Block 55, Lot 11. The zoning classification of the property is currently research and development, but that is an overlay zone. The underlying zoning is AAA residence, and that is important for a reason I'll describe later on. The lot is 66.4 acres, and more than 14 of those acres are deed restricted as a conservation easement area, which will remain. History of the property, just briefly, from approximately 1900 to 1930, it was the site of the seminary of the Holy Ghost Fathers, which was a school for men entering the priesthood. It was then occupied by the Immaculate Heart of Mary Order of Nuns. GTE purchased the property in 1979 and operated its management learning center in 1982 in the buildings that are currently in existence. The Dulce Group bought the property in 2003 and operated it as well as a corporate learning center and obtained various regulation changes over the years to allow various celebratory events. BRCP purchased the property from Dulce in 2009 and also secured similar zoning amendments with respect to special events. And then Queens Plaza West bought the property just a few years ago and has been operating it in the same manner as BRCP and the Dulce Center and GTE. There exist three buildings on the property, the main building, which is about 79,000 square feet, that has office, conference rooms, meeting rooms. Many of you may have been in the building to attend various functions by the Chamber of Commerce in the main building. The second building is 57,000 square feet on the southern side of the property and has 120 rooms for overnight stays. The third building on the northern side of the property is 16,500 square feet. It has a gym, a pool, and other space. There's also a 42-space indoor parking garage under that building. The site currently has 151 parking spaces and two surface lots. There are tennis courts, open fields, cemetery, and Stations of the Cross on the property. Part of the property is open to the West Norwalk Property Owners Association and those eligible for membership in that association and their families per a grant of restriction of conservation easement, which was recorded in the Norwalk Land Records in volume 5122 at page 76, and copies of that document have been provided to you. The proposal is to adaptively reuse the existing structures as a private non-sectarian school grades pre-K through 12, which would provide parents and students in Norwalk and surrounding communities an alternative option to the public school system or other private schools in the area. There are no proposed new buildings, no additions to the existing buildings, no outdoor sports fields, or bleachers, or scoreboards, or artificial lighting. In the first three years, we will build a school from the K through the middle school cohort, then add grades nine through 12, excuse me, and grades nine through 12 as the school body population grows. Maximum enrollment after seven to nine years is approximately 650 students, and that would be the cap on the enrollment. There is no nursery school or child daycare program. We require 158 parking spaces for all of the uses. 193 would be provided, and the school would follow the traditional conventional academic calendar. We're before you tonight to present additional traffic analyses that were requested by TMP, which is the Transportation, Mobility, and Parking Department of the City of Norwalk, along with your third-party consultant AKRF. Thereafter, once that presentation is made by Mr. Galanti, and if you have any questions or if Ms. Tarallo has any further comments, we would like to respond. We'll certainly hear from the public, and then we will respond to public comments, share our concerns about some of the proposed conditions of approval, should you deem it appropriate to approve this special permit, and then save time in the end for rebuttal. Comments from the public on June 28th generally related to four areas, and those were traffic, the second was density, use, impact on property values, quality of life, the third was consistency with plan of conservation and development, and last was generally continuation of the conservation easement areas and access to that area by members of the West Norwalk Property Owners Association. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Galanti and Mr. Sapola to discuss with you the additional analyses that were requested and what they have determined. Mr. Galanti?
Thank you, Liz. Mike Galanti, Hardisty and Hanover. And can, Brian, can you let Steve and Sapola have access to share his screen?
Yeah, you should be able to.
Okay, great. Again, Mike Galanti and Steve Sapola from Hardisty and Hanover. Our offices are located in South Norwalk. And I'm just going to take a little bit of time to pretty much summarize really the purpose of tonight's meeting, specifically for traffic and some of the more recent comments from both the city traffic staff and AKRF, the town, the city's peer review consultant.
Mr. Galanti, can you make that a little bit larger?
Sure, Steve. I would agree with you. I can't see it either. There we go. Perfect, thank you. Over the last few months, we've been responding to comments from city staff and AKRF. I believe we responded to pretty much everything that we were asked of, and we have different letters or letter reports submitted to the city documenting that. The most recent was July 14th, and before that, the June 27th report that came in, I think the day before the last hearing. What I like to focus on really is one major part, which was a sensitivity analysis requested, and I'll touch on that in a minute. But prior to that, during the last few months, we've responded to and added, you know, information to the file in reference to site traffic generation, as far as traffic to be generated by the school, bus utilization, size of the bus, distribution of bus patterns, how many students would be on buses out of the total student population. On-site, on the campus, we were asked to, and then we did expand information on traffic control, signing, pavement markings, crosswalks, sidewalks, things like that. Identify where parents were queued and where school buses were queued as far as coming into the campus. And a major part of our analysis, really prior to submitting any original first report and follow-up reports, we spent quite a bit of time on developing our school traffic patterns as far as the time of start for the different grades, and eventually, obviously, the departures which relate to the start of the grades as far as coming in in the morning. What the city staff and AKRF asked for, and I'm not sure, maybe the last six weeks, whatever it might, might be, was to provide a sensitivity analysis, and we thought it'd be best to spend a minute on what is a sensitivity analysis. Traffic engineers, we know what it is. We do it. In many cases, we do it internal to our office before we prepare and finalize the traffic report. We did it on this project. We spent quite a bit of time with the applicants as far as making a determination of when the classes should start in the morning. It's obvious that we've spread out the start times and the dismissals, to spread out traffic coming into the campus, one to minimize impacts to the area roads, and two to minimize on-campus activities and storage of vehicles, and so on. So we did that in a very detailed manner, and then we actually modified that slightly based on some of the comments we received. And reason, and I'll focus on the Fellow Street-Richards Avenue intersection, where we were asked to do another, well, a sensitivity analysis. And I might add, I'm not sure the last time ever we've been asked in Norwalk to do a sensitivity analysis. And as some of you may know, we've been doing work in Norwalk, well, me personally, probably since the mid-'80s, so it's been quite a while. But the purpose of the sensitivity analysis in this case was we analyzed a peak hour in the morning as it relates to our school traffic as it hits the roads. And that was determined to be 7:15 to 8:15 in the morning. The reason why, and it was slightly different during the process, but the reason for that time period and the reason for the request for a sensitivity analysis, which was requested for 7:30 to 8:30, a 15-minute shift, was really to focus on the potential impacts and overlap of traffic related to the Fox Run Elementary School that's located at the, well, near the Fellow Street-Richards Avenue intersection. We were very careful not to have it overlap. That school time start is 8:35 in the morning. Our students would be in classes, the last round of students coming would be in classes and sitting at their desk at 8:15 in the morning. So we were careful to provide that 20-minute separation. And that actually has an impact on the results of the analyses, and I'll focus only on this intersection of Fellow and Richards, because pretty much every other intersection does work fine under future condition with, with school traffic on the road system. And we analyze, of course, the morning and the afternoon peaks as it relates to school activities. In the morning, the commuter time periods are similar. In the afternoon, when a school is discharging 2, 3 o'clock, the commuter peak is obviously more like 5 o'clock at night. So there's no overlap pretty much in the afternoon. But in the analysis that we were asked to do, the sensitivity analysis, we looked at the Fellow Avenue-Richards Avenue intersection, and we looked at the 7:30, 8:30 as requested, and Steve, just, yeah, thank you. Under stop sign control of that intersection, which today is an always-stop sign T intersection, the westbound approach during the morning peak operates at level service F. So basically, the entire intersection is considered a level service F, even though the other two approaches are not operating at F. F is long traffic delays, basically, in the world of traffic engineering. Level service C is average conditions, and like in school, if you have an A, you're doing great, and you got a good grade. Under the stop sign control in our analysis, which is highlighted there in red, which was 7:15, 8:15, was a level, overall level service C. And that was, if you look at the approaches, it was level service C to D, I believe. And the D was on the westbound approach. The difference is really the traffic related to the Fox Hall of Fox Run Elementary School, where their traffic is coming in around 8:25 or 8:20, and certainly into 8:35 when that school starts in the morning. And that's what we were clearly trying to avoid as far as overlap, but we provided the analysis as requested, and we understand that. There's concern with this intersection. There are queues on the, we'll call it the westbound approach of Fellow Street, and that was the concern of both staff and the city's traffic consultant. So all in all, and then we did an analysis of a roundabout, which was also requested. And I believe the roundabout was suggested by the city and consultant because this intersection does not and would not meet the, what we call warrants for installation of a traffic signal, because the volumes are not high enough, and it's not that simple a term, but not high enough and not on the right approaches to warrant the traffic signal. So a traffic signal would not be installed at this location, although it was the first discussion we had with city staff months ago. So we did the roundabout analysis. The difference between a roundabout and a stop sign T intersection is a roundabout has basically yield approaches to the intersection. In this case, it's still three approaches. You would have a large circle in the middle to accommodate turning vehicles through the, through the circle itself. And obviously, in a roundabout, traffic is flowing somewhat unrestricted and moving for the intersection on the roundabout, and that's why it was analyzed, and you get a little better answer for that condition. You know, all in all, the roundabout is an option for consideration. The city is certainly considering that, that condition, and they've asked us to continue with that as part of this approval process if we reached a point in time tonight. The next slide, I just want to show quickly to show why this point, it doesn't really matter anymore, but this was a graph that was submitted in one of the reports. But just to highlight, the blue is the total traffic at the Fellow Street-Richards Avenue intersection. The red is the schoolhouse traffic. And if you see the highlighted yellow, which is 7:15, 8:15, our peak as far as school traffic, and you can see it's pretty much spread out. The bell doesn't ring once for all classes and 650 kids to arrive. It's spread out over four different start times. And as you reach the 8:15 in the morning and 8:30, you'll see there's really no schoolhouse traffic. And then, if we have the preschool starting at 9:15, which was a suggestion in one of our most recent meetings, and take it out of the Fox Run Elementary School start time, that's what you see in red, the 22 and the 13 vehicles at 9:15 in the morning, or up for the 9:15 in the morning. This is the reason why we picked the 7:15, 8:15 peak hour for our analysis and added that to the roadway system. The elementary school down the road is a different peak, and we tried to stay away from that. That's simply all we wanted to show the commission, that we went through great trouble to really separate our traffic and minimize impacts to the roads. Obviously, gives us a benefit by minimizing impact to the road and minimizing internal activity on the campus itself. I will leave it at that. I can certainly answer questions now or later from the commission or others, and then we'll just, we'll take it through the evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Galanti?
I'll ask, if I may. Mr. Galanti, did your study happen to look at whether people actually stop at any of those stop signs at that freeway intersection?
Well, Steve and I spent many, many mornings there separately over quite a while this spring, actually winter and spring up until the end of school year. And one of the things we did notice was that some motorists don't stop at stop signs, and that's kind of a condition you see in many places, not just at this intersection in Norwalk. But they don't stop when they actually should stop. If you have a roundabout, there is typically no stop sign. It's free flow into the intersection. And we typically have some concerns with that when you have a school nearby and you have crosswalks around the boundaries of a roundabout. But then, as you question, in some cases, no, we, yes, we did see people not stopping.
That's my experience when I drive through there. It's a best rolling stop.
You are correct.
That really has any impact on the traffic. It's still the same number of cars, but it's pretty loose.
Correct.
Yeah, Mr. Galanti, also, the stop sign was down several times this spring. You know, I would drive through there, and there's no stop sign. You know, it would be down for like two days, and then the city would come put it back up. I don't know who was taking it down. The stop sign, as you go... You know, it would be down for like two days and then the city would come put it back up, I don't know who was taking it down, the stop sign as you go. You know. From, you know, down uh from Philo. Onto Fox Run, uh you know, past Richards.
Okay.
Is a tenuous kind of thing, I mean, whoever was taking it down, it was that down three, four times.
Well.
Cause I, by the frequency.
I can assure you what wasn't us.
No, I'm sure it wasn't, but I'm just saying that that's a a problem.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's it's a maintenance issue with DPW, not to pick on them, but obviously someone needs to call them and let them know the signs down and. They'll usually be out there as quick as they can, especially with a stop sign to put it back and install it back in.
Oh, I'm sure.
What if there's a stop bar there and uh hopefully the the motor ceases to stop or maybe not stop sign that particular day because. For whatever reason, it was it was knocked down.
Yeah, one of my concerns too is this small, small streets, you know, uh little little fox and weed. That are gonna have to be used for access by all of those cars. You know, they they typically don't, they typically don't have that much traffic. Uh. You know, people walk. There are people with baby carriages, people walking their dog. I mean, I think those small streets are really a concern here. And that's another subject, I understand. You're talking now about the Richards Avenue intersection.
Well, we did analyze all the roads and intersections in the entire study area, we looked at accident data for several years. Uh we were asked to add two more years, twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, which we did. Uh and fortunately, there weren't, there were not a a high number of accidents, I don't believe there were any, fortunately, no pedestrian related accidents on the road.
Yeah, there aren't any cars very much here, you know.
Well, they don't forget there's an existing development on site. And as we come out of this pandemic, hopefully, that that those buildings are gonna generate traffic once again, I believe that's already started. As far as activities at the at the con- conference center.
Aren't those usually in the evening?
Could be all day, be all weekend, uh, or just be weekdays.
I thought, I thought I saw Brian Clark's hand up. Lou.
Yeah.
Brian Clark had his hand up.
Uh, Brian's representing another application, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I didn't put my hand up, hi guys. Is everybody there, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Yes.
Right, good evening, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for my uh. Very being. Not professional tonight, but I just got out of the pool, I had a four o'clock client cancel, so I jumped in. But with that being said, I I I am, um, I wanna jump in on on this uh conversation quickly. I I think West Norwalk.
Right, I think a- as if you're commenting as a member of the public, we haven't gotten to that.
Okay, fair enough, then then I'll step down.
Okay.
All right, so so I'll work with Jessica when we're needed.
Okay.
All right, beautiful, thank you, I'm sorry.
Uh, any other uh questions from uh the commission regarding this? Uh Attorney Sachi?
Oh, we have nothing else to add at this point, no new information. We'd like to hear what, if there are any additional comments from the public, and then after those comments have concluded. We'll respond to all the comments raised last month, those tonight, and then leave any more time for either rebuttal or summation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Brian, we do have representative here from uh AKRF.
Yeah, so if you, if you have any questions for for Marissa from AKRF. Now would be a good time to ask, otherwise Marissa can kind of go over her her analysis and and recommendations.
Yeah, I, did you want me to, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, did you want me to do that now or after the public hearing, um whichever you prefer?
Yeah, probably best to do it now, that way we have it all on the record and and at least we'll have our chance to rebut at the end.
Okay, uh no problem, so we uh provided a.
I'm sorry, Marissa, um uh just introduce yourself to the public.
So sorry, I've been here once, I feel like I've been here forever, uh Marissa Tarallo with AKRF, we are the city's uh peer review traffic consultant. Um, we have reviewed two rounds, this is our third round of comments on the thirty-two weed application. Um, the most recent being specifically on the sensitivity analysis, which um. The commission may remember was uh discussed at the last meeting and agreed to be conducted. Um, and that's where this came from, both there, the city, myself. Um, we reviewed the sensitive analysis. And it analyzed the critical, we just asked for the critical intersection of uh Philo and Richards. Um, we have a little bit of a difference of opinions on the peak period and the. I guess more, the peak period of the school is not up for debate, it is very much seven fifteen to eight fifteen. Um, we are looking uh as a traffic consultant at the reasonable worst case traffic scenario for the critical intersections. And the actual roadway peak hour, uh I believe is documented in their study of eight to nine. Um, which they're well outside of eight to nine peak hour, they're seven fifteen, eight fifteen. What we're concerned with is that all traffic studies are broken down into fifteen minute intervals. The last start time of the school is exactly eight fifteen, um it's. Not allotting for anybody showing up late, uh you know, there's cars still leaving, it's it's just a minor difference. And then in that graph that we were discussing as well, there's. You know, uh nineteen cars that show up in the very first fifteen minutes of their peak hour, and there's seven cars that show up. Just outside of their peak hour in seven thirty, eight thirty, it's like very little difference, the majority of their traffic is actually coming right in the middle of that. The background traffic, though, goes from a hundred and two cars at seven fifteen to three hundred and sixty-seven at this intersection. Now, I think everyone recognizes that the intersection is a problem today during those peak hours. The only concern we had and the reason for the sensitivity and not asking them to redo their whole study was what would happen? If some traffic by the school was generated at that intersection at that time. Uh because as we were reviewing it, we don't see it as the resolution. Completely restricts that no traffic can arrive within a certain hour block. So what we are looking for on your behalf is just the reasonable worst case that could happen. Reasonably speaking, I felt some traffic could shift fifteen minutes, I didn't think that it would shift to eight till nine, so that's why we asked for one intersection with a fifteen minute shift on it. That analysis showed an increase in delay for the westbound approach of thirty-nine seconds, which is the current problem. It is failing today, uh it it's already bad, it's going to be exacerbated if traffic goes through that intersection. The sensitive analysis did show that this site would have about a hundred and forty cars going through that intersection. Um, during that peak hour, um between the eastbound right turn and the northbound left turn. Were where the school, this school was gonna generate traffic, which is not on the peak. Uh, critical approach, but the problem becomes there's less. Opportunities and that queue starts to grow and grow. That queue during the seven fifteen, the seven thirty, eight thirty sensitivity that we were asking for would back up substantially. We asked for the roundabout, as Michael pointed out, because um there, it doesn't mean a signal warrant, my first instinct is usually to ask for a traffic signal. Um, which might not have, probably wouldn't have solved the queuing issue. Um, but that's what we would ask for, it doesn't work here, it doesn't need a warrant, so we just asked that all options be explored. Um, in fairness, the constructability of the traffic circle or roundabout has not been explored. We asked for it from an operational comparison perspective. From an operations perspective, the westbound approach is notably improved with a roundabout, and that was the conclusion of our memorandum to you. Um, and the queue would potentially still spill back to the Fox Run's driveways as it does today, but it would be notably cut down. From what it could be under the sensitivity analysis without the roundabout. Um, in that seven thirty to eight thirty peak hour, so the question is really. Um, or the difference of opinion for you to evaluate is really just. Um, is there a possibility that traffic is going to come? Outside of past eight fifteen, and is it going to be enough to further exacerbate a current problem at Philo and Richards? And we just wanted that data in front of you. Um, so that is basically the summary of our memorandum, and there's. Minor details regarding the site plan, but again, most of it is focused on the sensitivity in this one intersection. Um, the only other thing I'd point out as as I guess my opportunity to to give another perspective is that. Uh, we would disagree with the um. Characterization of a roundabout potentially being concerning near a school. Um, a roundabout slows trap cars off uh greatly. They can't just run a stop sign because it's a physical geometric improvement. Um, you see roundabouts, if you look around near lots of schools, particularly around a lot of college campuses with a lot of pedestrian activity. Um, so. I just want to point out that I don't think that. That solution is less safe than the current scenario, whether it's more safe or not, I'll leave that for. From further discussion or data, but I don't think you can characterize it as less safe than the current scenario, uh from my uh opinion.
Marissa, my um, it's my understanding under our regulations. That if a project um negatively impacts uh on uh traffic. It is the obligation of the uh developer. Um, to take actions, uh to at least um. Uh, re- re- in this case, return the intersection. Uh, to uh what it was uh before the development. Uh, is that not uh correct?
Yes, so the only caveats with that are the period with which they analyze. If you look at the base analysis, it's seven fifteen, eight fifteen, they're not impacting it. The other um item, and I saw it on the slide that Michael and Steve had, um. Technically Norwalk's guidelines, which I do think are guidelines, so they're open for interpretation, but. The how they define a mitigation trigger and what's required for mitigation is based on overall intersection level of service. Which they showed to you as like level service FCC. Um, generally, uh outside of my work in the city of Norwalk, we don't consider that uh a proper way to evaluate impacts as a whole. Mainly because an overall intersection level of service averages everything going on at the intersection and then gives it one grade. So something can be really bad and everything else can be good, and that's gonna make the overall intersection better. But the problem hasn't been resolved, so they, and and in fairness, um Michael Glonte, they they broke out everything by movement as we normally like to see it. They acknowledge that there's the increase specifically in the westbound approach. But whether they generate an impact under your current guidelines is. Listed or written as overall intersection, which would not necessarily be an impact. Um, it's, again, I, it's a guideline, so it's open to your interpretation, but. We haven't technically defined in black and white that they have an impact because we have differences of opinions on the peak hours. And then differences of opinions as to what we decide is going to be an impact here.
But even if we average uh the entire uh intersection. Um, uh in your worst case scenario. Um, conditions are worse with uh the school than they are without it.
They are worse, they are not, um. They might be from B to C, I guess is what I'm saying, and usually we don't start requiring you to bring it back down to B. Uh, until you're up to D, and then we ask you to bring it back down. So everything's deteriorating, that's, there's more traffic, it's deteriorating, but it's not deteriorating to the point of. Congestion on an overall intersection level, because really it's the westbound approach. Everyone else is kind of fine there, it's the westbound approach that's the problem.
Thank you. Uh, other questions? All right, if not, let's move on. Uh, Attorney Sachi, you comfortable with us opening it up to the public at this point?
Didn't realize I was muted, excuse me.
That's okay.
Thank you, um, Ms. Tarallo, does this? Study, or I don't know if I asked you or the other gentleman, um, does this analysis take into consideration that? Cars that are departing from the new potential new school could go in other directions. Like, they don't all have to go south on Richards Avenue, which is what this. I think this analysis is just studying that intersection, they could go north on Weed Street, they could go west on Philo Street. They could go back out and go north on Fox Run Road, north of the school. So do these numbers give any? Thought to the fact that they're not all coming to go like down south to Route One?
Yes, yeah, they have a proper distribution based on a a good amount of zip code data. Uh, they distribute it all around, what I was talking about with what they distributed through that intersection was a percentage of their total trips. So they're not assuming everyone's going through this by any means. Um, they do have to make some level of assumption that all of this is estimation, so to your point. Did we get the exact number right of who goes which way? No, we'll never get that right from a, you know, an estimated projection traffic study. But they did a very good job with their zip code data distributing traffic accordingly.
Okay, and I think I asked this last time, but. Is there any point of comparison for us as planning and zoning commissioners with? Say Highland Avenue with the Brian McMahon High School, the Brookside Elementary School and the Rotan Middle School? I mean, that's a one in, one out kind of street. You know, there's, I mean, yeah, there are some side streets, but. Those driveways are all on Highland Avenue for departing and entering those schools. Do we have any numbers on that? They're much bigger than what this schoolhouse academy is proposing in terms of numbers.
So I think Brian can also speak to this, I know that the city, um and we were involved with it, went through a. Process of trying, but it was specific to bossing and trying to figure out the bus percentage that we all came to agreement on, that we looked at other sites. Um, but whether we compared the operations of another site and we could give you a site to look at, that's gonna be very similar to this, um that we don't have. Um, myself, I don't have, whether Michael's done some observations somewhere that he may be able to. Speak to what school he thinks this will operate similar to, I I can't say.
Okay, thank you.
JJ, I'm sorry, you had a question?
No, I was advocating for Tammy.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Uh, anything else? All right, uh Attorney Sachi, uh you're comfortable with us uh opening it up to the public?
That's perfectly fine.
Okay, uh we ask uh the members of uh the public to uh please identify yourself and. Provide us with your uh address uh before speaking. With that, Brian, you want to explain uh how they can um uh express their interest in speaking?
Yeah, so if you're a member from uh the public and you'd like to speak, um you have this application. Uh, you can use the raise your hand feature, it's at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialed in on a phone, you would hit star nine. And then I can bring you over to speak.
Yeah, Stephanie Towers.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, I'm not Stephanie Towers, that would be my wife, my name's Adam Towers. Um, I am uh looking to speak on behalf of the Schoolhouse Academy. Um, I visited the grounds recently and um.
I'm sorry, Mr. Towers, uh can you provide us with your address, please?
Absolutely, uh fifteen Indian Spring Road in Norwalk.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so we visited Nor uh. Schoolhouse Academy recently, or the pro- the grounds proposed for Schoolhouse Academy recently. And are excited by the prospect of a school being in that location. I think uh we have kids in uh elementary school age and are happy with the schools up until middle school. At middle school, we have some concerns about the school options that are available to us. And I I don't necessarily need to litigate that, but there's. Uh, some concerns and that obviously impacts uh our decision on A, where we live, we love Norwalk, we love Rowayden. Um, there are obviously some concerns about some of the schools and that may impact our decision on whether to stay here. Um, and frankly, we can't afford the private school option, I think it's uh forty-seven thousand dollars per kid per year. And we have two kids, uh so ninety to a hundred thousand dollars after tax is not achievable. Um, so having a school in that middle price point uh is exciting to us. Um, and uh in this location is exciting as well, when we, when we visited the facility. We saw uh an educational facility that's already in use for education. We saw um uh some fantastic facilities, including a pool, room for dance, room for drama. Uh, lots of green space that obviously insulates the community around. Um, and lots of room for uh uh routing of traffic and parking onsite, which was uh was uh really attractive. So. Uh, we're excited by this opportunity, uh we're obviously hoping that uh you approve this uh school to move forward. Um, and. Um, and obviously. Our hope that the benefit of this is probably a net benefit to the community. Obviously, it sounds like there are some. Uh, traffic challenges that are being worked through, but I think the net benefit to the. Community is obvious. We're see, hopefully we will see better education, uh, more middle class families staying in, uh, Norwalk rather than moving to surrounding towns. Um, which hopefully will help, um, to the, uh, build better communities. So we think the net benefit here is very clear and. Appreciate the time here and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Liz Beinfield.
I, uh. Had the privilege of visiting the Schoolhouse Academy as well.
I actually apologize.
Oh, sorry, Liz Beinfield, um. So for the last year, I have.
I'm sorry again. Can we have your address, please?
Yes, that's what I'm about to tell you. For the last year, I was renting on the Rowayden School Parking Lot at Four Roten Avenue. And for the eleven years prior to that, I lived at eleven Panoir Street. Which was directly above the Five Mile River Nursery School. So for the last twelve years, I have lived. At. A school, um. Within. Twenty-five feet of my home. Um, I have been, um, a top. Norwalk real estate agent for. Over twenty-five years. I heard that there was some concern about people's property values and I. Do not believe that the property values will be impacted in a negative way at all. I feel quite the opposite for Norwalk in general. Um. When people want to move, I live in Rowayden. When people want to move to Rowayden, the first thing they talk about. Are the public schools. I have two children. They went to Rowayden School. They went to. Roten Middle School and they went to Brian McMahon and they are stellar human beings. So. It's not my. Personal opinion, but it is the opinion of. Masses of people that consider moving to Norwalk or to Rowayden. I think that this school poses an incredible opportunity. For many, many, many more families. To move to our area and feel a comfort level. That they should feel anyway, going to the public school, but. Um, they will definitely feel having the option to pursue. Schoolhouse Academy, which is a fraction of the cost of. Private schools. It's a beautiful facility. I am. I was extremely impressed by it. And I, having lived again for, for twelve, thirteen years. Uh, just about on school property, I do not see a negative impact at all. And I've sold many, many houses. That have been right off of school properties. Uh, I was involved in a bidding war this summer. Uh, for a property that abutted the back of a school. At the school was in New Canaan, but this property had a gate to the backyard of the school. It was an elementary school. And there were over ten offers on it and the house went for hundreds over asks. So. I, I just wanted to let you know that I feel that the neighbors that are concerned, I, I don't believe that they should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, if anyone else is looking to speak, you can use the raise your hand tool, or you could hit star nine. Bill and Betsy Ren, I have you as having spoken at the twenty-eighth, but if it's just in regards to the new material, then, uh, you should be able to speak on that.
Hi, um, yes, it's Betsy Ren, and I did not speak last time. So does that count? Can I, can I pipe up?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So, um, we live, live at sixty-seven Weed Avenue. And, um, I wonder if you're taking in, if the traffic study takes speeding into account. Because the speeding on Weed Avenue. Um, we had a, a, a police officer was out on the road a couple of mornings and I spoke to him. He said he stopped one person who was doing fifty-six miles an hour. And that's just the people he can catch. I mean, they're flying. They, the, it, it's a, it's twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. And maybe ten percent, maybe do the speed limit. The rest. It, it's like incredible. We've put up a fence to, just to block the unbelievable onslaught of speeding. And, um, and we've lived here twenty-five years and. And it, this is just really just started. So your traffic study, I'd say you have to do it all over again for weed because it's just become a throughway. It's a cut through. Right. It's a cut through. And so we've lived here twenty-five years. And this is the first year that we're talking about moving. It's, and you know, it's just become unbearable. So I really hope that you're taking reality, not just some cockamamie study, which is what it is. Because everybody knows the traffic in West Norwalk, Scribner Road. And wait, that's not even with Wegmans and this Sikh temple. It, it's gonna be unbearable, intolerable. It already is. And it's not just weed. It's, it's everywhere. And. I mean, there's no point in living here. You may as well just make it a for-profit city. And no people. That's it. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Hi, my name is Jenny Friedman. Um, I'm a resident of Norwalk. I'm also a real estate agent. Um, and I'm talking in support of Schoolhouse Academy.
Ms. Friedman, can we have your address, please?
Your twenty-three Crock Avenue.
Thank you.
Or. So, um, firstly, I would just like to agree that I wholeheartedly feel that this will not negatively impact. The real estate values of the homes around there for those that are concerned about that. Um, secondly, I'm a parent and. I too am. Like overwhelmingly excited to have another opportunity to send my child to school in the city of Norwalk. That is not a public school. Um. You know, there's many things I commend in our public school system for, but, um, to have options, I think, is wonderful. And I don't believe that there are a fair amount of options at the middle school, high school level. Um, so I really think that we need to take into account, you know. Education for our kids and having somewhere local for them to go. And also at the price, you know, keeping price in mind, whereas. Other pub, private schools at forty, fifty thousand dollars a year. It's just not accessible to a lot of people, including myself. So. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Hi guys, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, good afternoon, whatever it is at this point. Um. With that being said, quickly, uh, I, I grew up in West Norwalk. I think this is needed in the.
I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. Clark. Can we, can we have your address, please?
Uh, my, my, my current address is thirty-five William Street in, in, in Norwalk, but. Haven't been a lifelong member of Norwalk and a constituent of the city. Um, with that being said, I think this is needed for. Our community. Um, I, I am in one hundred percent. Saying that, uh, this should, should get passed through. Well, with that being said, that, that's all I have to say. It's just, it literally is short, simple and sweet.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, if anyone else is looking to speak, you can use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen or hit star nine if you're dialed in on a phone. Mr. Cantor, I have you as having spoken, um, so just have to be on new material. Speaking.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I, I just want to address the comments that people have made who do not live in Westport or Norwalk like, that, like I do, that how important it is to. Have this, uh, for-profit school established. Oh. Yeah. Nor- Norwalk needs a for-profit school. Like a hole in the head. But. Both my kid, I've lived here since nineteen eighty-four. Both my kids went to school, Norwalk Public Schools. Both my kids have PhDs. And good jobs. So what we want to be, you know, so the concern for Norwalk should be for its. For its reputation. As a well-planned city concerned with maintaining the quality of its residential neighborhoods and the well-being of its public school students. Every, the only people who spoke. Before me are, are, are most of them. Uh. Are saying. That, you know, this is, this is going to improve the property values in West Norwalk. I'm an economist. They don't know that and that's not, and that's certainly not true. In my view. Uh. What you're going to be doing if you allow this, uh, Schoolhouse Academy to be established is you're going to be destroying Norwalk's reputation as a well-planned and attractive place to live. Whose goal. According to a city, uh, wide plan is to preserve and maintain the overall character of this traditional single-family neighborhood. Sure, people that, some people in Norwalk who can afford, I mean, Rowayden, who may be able to afford a private school, maybe they want it, um. But it's not. In the interest of Norwalk. So that, I, I'm gonna stop there, but, uh. Clearly, uh, Schoolhouse Academy has done a good job in mobilizing. Um, individuals to come to this meeting and speak up in favor of their plan. I think it's devastating for West Norwalk and devastating for the city and devastating for your reputation. As a planning board who has the interest of the city at heart.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else, if you'd like to speak? Use the raise your hand feature or hit star nine.
That it, Brian?
It appears so.
Okay. Turn it back to Attorney Sachi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Uh, at first, I would just like to ask Mr. Glonty if he has any comments. To share with respect to, um, Ms. Torelllo's comments. If not, then I will, uh, rebut and summarize and, and bring this hearing to a close. Mike. Can't hear you.
You're muted, Mr. Glonty.
Good thing you can hear me. Only kidding. No, I, I don't see a need to rebut. I mean, we may disagree slightly on some of the issues with roundabouts, but no, I, 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 no need to rebut anything. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Glonty, Ms. Torelllo and members of the, the board. Thank you for your time. And staff for your attention and assistance in moving this application through the process. Um, as I mentioned be- before, I thought that there were about five areas that needed to be discussed and I'm not going to. Discuss each and every speaker or each and every comment. But the traffic issues that had, were concerning and the additional analyses, I think those have been not only discussed by Mr. Glonty and further analyzed and. Evaluated by Ms. Torelllo, but I think we have, we've, uh, provided you with all of the information necessary for you to make a decision on that. I will make one comment, though. Two things. Your regulations and the standards for special permit. Talk about stable traffic flow as follows. It says, quote, "Stable traffic flow. Shall mean that site-generated traffic shall not adversely affect pedestrian or vehicular safety. Conflict with the pattern of highway circulation or increase traffic congestion to a level of service considered unacceptable by the commission." "The commission shall not approve developments which fail to maintain stable, stable traffic flow unless provision has been made for the improvement of inadequate conditions." A few comments on that. You know where in your regulations define what unacceptable is. And typically this commission has determined that levels of service B, C, D, and in some instances E are considered acceptable. Having said that, we have provided various, uh, options. We've adjusted, adjusted the start times. We've done some timing consider, timing changes to the Nursery Street, New Canaan Avenue site. And also a resolution for approval, if you decide to move this application to approval. Has additional considerations and additional mitigation measures that my client is willing to accept with some caveats, which I'll get to in a minute. I'll get to those in just a bit. As far as use, density, property values and quality of life. Some have suggested that the use is not permitted, does not comport with the Plan of Conservation and Development, P O C D. And will impair property values. First. Keep in mind, this is private property. It is owned research and development with an underlying AAA resident zone. I suspect that many of neighbors, many members of the public and neighbors had the same concerns when GTE purchased the property in nineteen seventy-nine. And developed it into a corporate learning facility. But per section one eighteen, six hundred B one of the regulations, which is referenced in the special permit application. Quote, "Premises and buildings shall be used only pursuant to special permit as defined in subsection B two." Except that if the zoning district existing prior to the amendment of the zoning map. Establishes this zone as a resident zone, the use of the premises and buildings shall be permitted in accordance with the requirements of such prior district. Therefore, the part, prior to R and D classification, in connection with GTE's purchase and subsequent development of the site. As a corporate management and learning center in nineteen seventy-nine, eighty-two, the property was residentially zoned. So the question that schoolhouse is a use that is not permitted is not correct. Schoolhouse is a permitted use because the underlying zone was AAA residence and schools are permitted in the AAA residence zone. And this has been confirmed with your staff. So the use is permitted. The minimum lot size well exceeds the AAA residence one acre lot and the R and D ten acre minimum lot. As a non-sectarian school, it is not exempt from the payment of taxes and my client has budgeted for such payments. All existing conditions on the site will not change. Setbacks, open space, lot coverage. Building height will not change since we're not doing anything to the structures. We're not adding additional le- levels. We're not adding stories. We're not expanding the buildings. One neighbor suggested that, that assisting, assisted living would be a better use of the property. While that's nice, it's not permitted in the R and D zone, nor is it permitted in the AAA residence zone today, and that would require a text amendment by this commission. Other possible uses are office, which could likely have a greater impact on the neighborhood with commuters coming in daily in the morning rush and the afternoon rush. Or perhaps a conservation development, if that was even possible on the site. One neighbor commented about the age of the maps and the plans presented as outdated since she didn't see her name on the plan. Well, the survey was dated twenty twenty-one. And adjoining property owners may not be up to date as of the date of a filing. But there is a notation N slash F, which means now or formerly, and that's a very standard practice for surveys. Impact on property values. You've heard from both. Um, Liz Beinfield and, excuse me, Jenny Friedman. There's been no evidence or testimony presented to you that demonstrates the Schoolhouse Academy at this site would impair or impact residential property values. The Connecticut appellate court in Bethlehem Christian Fellowship versus Town of Morris, seventy-three Connecticut appellate four, forty-two. Determine that evidence concerning property values must be substantial. And it is not substantial if it's based on fear, speculation or conjecture. No appraisal has been submitted to substantiate this claim. Impact on the quality of lives, life from noise, idling vehicles and other similar concerns. We submit that aside from the arrival and departure of vehicles at drop-off and pickup times. The only noise that would emanate from the building is the sound of children playing on the fields and going in and out of, of, of the structures. Schools would, the school would generally, generally close at five PM on weekdays. Rarely be any evening or weekend events, only those similar to other schools in the area. Noise. There is a noise ordinance in Norwalk. And anyone who believes there's been a violation can contact the Nora Police Department for a decibel reading. If there's a violation, a citation should be issued. Idling of vehicles was another concern and the emissions that, that come from idling of vehicles. Under section twenty-two A dash one seventy-five dash eighteen B three of the regulations of Connecticut State Agencies. Idling of vehicles more than three minutes is prohibited. And the police department can issue citations to school buses when, and others, other pedestrian vehicle, excuse me, other vehicles. when they witness idling for longer than three minutes, and that's per Section 14-7, 277 of the general statutes. Speeding, that was mentioned at the last meeting. That's an enforcement issue that the Norwalk Police Department should be responsible for, and I see that Lieutenant Blake is on the line. I, perhaps, some of the members of the public should contact Lieutenant Blake or the patrol supervisor and have some speeding enforcement undertaken on Wade Avenue and surrounding streets. Some men mentioned that they don't trust the applicant. They're not going, what you're going to get is not what you're going to get, or some sort of comment to that effect. This is a special permit application, so any change to the application, the site plan, the programming, hours of operation must come back to you for your review and approval. Now for the Plan of Conservation and Development. Excuse me. Otherwise known as the P O C D, or also a master plan, that is a guiding advisory document. Quote, "The Plan of Development is a recommendation for future development of a municipality, including recommended land uses and location of public improvements." End quote. And it is not the same as a comprehensive plan, which evolves from the history of zoning in the town as reflected by the zoning regulations and map. That is directly from Robert Fuller's Land Use Law and Practice, Section 4.4, and is further articulated in Fertney versus Simsbury, 159 Connecticut, 585, a 1970 case. Moreover, quote, "The Plan of Development is a planning concept and is merely advisory too, and does not bind the zoning commission." That's Section 4.4 from the Fuller Treatise, and also is in Terry Tondro's Land Use in Connecticut, Chapter 2, and articulated in Lathrop versus Planning and Zoning Commission of Trumbull, 164 Connecticut, 215, and First Hartford Realty versus Plan and Zoning Commission, 165 Connecticut, both 1973 cases. By contrast, the comprehensive plan is the general plan to control and direct the use and development of property within municipalities. It's found in the Scheme of Zoning, which includes your regulations, the map, the zoning classification of a property, the standards of review for special permit, which we submit have all been met or exceeded in this instance, and the heightened bulk requirements for the zoning classification of this, of the property. Therefore, those are what control, and not the P O C D. However, we believe this proposal addresses and supports many of the goals and policies set forth in the P O C D, including, first, it supports the goal and policy that, quote, "Norwalk is a center of education, research, and innovation," page 84. It supports the concept that educational opportunities such as Schoolhouse Academy can be seen as one way to, quote, "Market the city of Norwalk as a place to live," page 75. In the future years, the applicant plans to provide electric vehicle charging stations and possibly solar panels, which, quote, "Promote renewable energy," page 147. The continuance of the West Norwalk neighbors' ability to walk on the site in the conservation easement area as defined in the Grant of Conservation Easement supports the city's interest, quote, "In private or public use that preserves the open space character," page 123. Maintaining the existing conservation easement areas and expanding them to the rear of the dwellings on Huckleberry and Little Fox, as is mentioned in one of the possible conditions of approval, quote, "Preserves open space for natural resource protection and management," page 124. Schools are considered compatible uses in residential zone, page 237. Uses such as schools located in a single-family district coexist without much difficulty, page 237 of the Plan of Conservation. As to the comment that another, another school is, quote unquote, "Not needed or unnecessary", 15% of school-aged students living in Norwalk are enrolled in private schools or public schools outside Norwalk Public Schools. That's on page 85 of your Plan of Conservation and Development. And those could be All Saints, Winston Prep, Regina Pachus in Norwalk, or the King School, St. Luke's, Greens Farm, Montessori, or any number of other private schools outside the city limits. This suggests to me that some residents prefer alternative education opportunities. Schoolhouse Academy offers that and may keep some of those, the 15% of those school-aged children who live in Norwalk within the city borders, so that parents can choose, who choose not to enroll their students in the Norwalk Public Schools, have an option within the city and would not have to travel to other towns or cities to educate their children. There is no evidence or support the P O C D that a private school is inconsistent with its goals or policies. Lastly, continuation of access to the conservation easement areas. The Grant of Conservation Easement Area, as I said earlier, is about 20 years old. Members of the West Norwalk Property Owners Association, and then those who can be members of that association and their families, will continue to have that access. It specifically allows access to just over 14 acres, more than 21% of the property, but not the whole property, and it's identified in the grant and on a map. The grant, however, does not permit unfettered free access to the entirety of the property, and the property owner under that grant is entitled to impose certain time and access restrictions as it sees fit. The applicant and the owner will continue to abide by the terms of that grant. But those who have been granted access rights over time also must respect the limitations of use. For example, they do not have permission nor access to the tennis courts and never did. Additional limited conservation easement areas consistent with the grant of restrictions suggested by staff would be acceptable to my client, provided that schoolhouse parents, staff, and faculty are able to use that area, but that it is not acceptable to the public. In light of the school use and the instances that we continue to see on school campuses of violence, that is not an area that should be available to the public, and I would suspect that you would agree. It's not prudent, it's not wise, since student, faculty, staff, and parent safety is paramount. A few comments on additional conditions of approval that have been suggested. Excuse me. Sidewalks and the roundabout. Mr. Glonty has already discussed the level of service that exists today at the intersection of Philo and Richards. I won't go into it any further, as did Ms. Tarallo. The $500,000 contribution recommended by T M P and A K R F for the Philo-Richards intersection is arbitrary and capricious and without foundation. We haven't been provided with any backup information on how that figure was decided. And the Wade Avenue and Little Fox sidewalks are substantial costly improvements to a school that has yet to have one student enroll and will not reach maximum enrollment for a period of seven to nine years. There may not be sufficient roadway width to accommodate the, the roundabout or to accommodate sidewalks on Wade Street. However, my client recognizes that it adds traffic to the intersection. It recognizes that there may be a need for some sidewalks, such as on Little Fox from the driveway entrance to Fox Run Road. It would prefer the imposition, if that is what your pleasure is, of a significantly lesser amount, and certainly on a phased-in basis, whether it's a lesser amount or the amount suggested, so that my client could fund that account over time as students enroll and as grades are populated. We won't automatically open with 650 students, so, and that, that fund has to be created over time, and we would ask that you would consider that phased-in approach. In summation, the use of the property is permitted. The traffic has been evaluated, mitigation measures have been suggested. Many, many goals and, and policies of the P O C D have been met. This offers an educational experience, an alternative to parents and students, or even some of your school-aged children are already leaving the district to be educated elsewhere. It adaptively reuses existing buildings. There are no additions, no expansions of the existing structures, and it meets all of the heightened bulk requirements of the AAA zone and the research and development zone. Lastly, we believe that this application meets all of the standards of review in Section 118, 1450 of the regulations, and those are the standards you must apply for a special permit application. We've identified the standards and analyzed them and specified how we believe we meet or exceed them. I'm not going to go through each and every one. I hope that you would close the hearing this evening, and more importantly, that you would vote favorably to provide this adaptive reuse of this structure and to provide an educational opportunity and an alternative for families in Norwalk and elsewhere. Should you have any further questions of me, I'm happy to answer them, as with Mr. Glonty or Mr. Shat- Mr. Chata- Excuse me, Shatterella or Mr. McGlocken. With that, we have nothing further to add, and no further presentation to you this evening.
Questions from members of the Commission? All right, while people are thinking about that, I, I apologize, Attorney Sachi. I didn't fully follow what you were saying with regard to the roundabout and the sidewalks. I didn't understand whether the funding that you were referring to was for sidewalks or the roundabout, or for something else entirely?
Certainly. The, the funding that has been recommended by T and K R F is half a million dollars for the design of the roundabout. It's construction to go toward the design and to be provided to the city in the event that this is something that eventually is constructed. We believe that's high for a private school that hasn't opened yet. We're certainly willing to make a contribution. We prefer it to be less than half a million dollars. But more importantly, whatever you impose, if you impose something, we would, we would respectfully request that it be a phased-in contribution, such as, for example, when school opens, X amount percent is to be contributed. Once we have grades K through three, another amount is contributed. It's just very burdensome for a, a new school to come up with half a million dollars just to fund the, the design of a roundabout, which we don't know whether or not it's going to be implemented when we have other design concerns and interior building and architectural and interior retrofits that we need to undertake to make these, these structures a functioning school.
Okay, thank you, I.
Does that explain it better?
Absolutely, I, I'm not sure it was a question of your explanation as much as it was my lack of attention.
If I was, if I was. No, not at all, if I was unclear, I apologize.
Other questions from members of the Commission before we close the hearing?
I have one question. You were talking about how, as I understand it, that idling would be addressed by police enforcement. I picked my grandson up at Winston Academy frequently, and the cars of people, you know, picking up students separate from the school buses would back up all the way out at half, you know, a block down West Rox Road, and those cars were idling the whole time. You know, I was, I would idle there for at least 40 minutes in the, you know, as I tried to pick up my grandson. So I would imagine the same kind of thing would happen at this school. People would be backed up down the driveway and onto Little Fox Lane, and they'd have to idle, they're waiting, you know, there, there's only so fast, they, you can load the kids into the cars and have them taken away, and sometimes they're slow, they have to go back in the school for this or that, and, you know, blah, 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 doesn't go as smoothly as a military operation. So it seems to me that idling is, is a considerable problem, even if we take out of the question the school buses, which would no doubt idle as well.
Like any other statute that has enforcement that needs to be attached to it, a statute is only as good as its enforcement. And if that is a priority that the city and the police department decide is, is a priority, then a, a, a little bit of enforcement will go a long way, just as a little bit of enforcement on speed limits will go a long way to making sure that others recognize that the limits are there. It's, it's something that the police department has to be notified about, they have to be, take willingness to issue those citations because they have the power to do it under the statute.
So you're suggesting they should just come ticket all the parents waiting in line to pick up the kids?
They have, they have the right to do that because the idling statute is three minutes. Perhaps the closest to the building. It's, it's a difficult issue, but it exists at every school, it wouldn't be just a specific.
They're all backed up out on Philo Street, out on Fox Run Road to pick the kids up at Fox Run. I drive by there all the time, you know, as school is letting out, and see the queue of cars, you know, like a block long before they even enter the Fox Run School property. And I can't imagine that wouldn't be the case at this school as well, you know, I mean, there's, so the police would have to be there to get the, the parents and grandparents picking up the kids, I guess.
Well, like any, like any other statute, we're, we're subject to abiding by statutory requirements. But as far as queuing, waiting for students to be picked up, there is ample room, and we've demonstrated that. There's ample room on the site for parents and buses to come in and stack in the parking lot. But you're right, it's, everyone does it, you, you're waiting for someone, you're not going to necessarily turn off your vehicle, but there are, there are sanctions if you don't. It's a willingness on the part of municipalities to make that a priority. The tools are there, the tools are there.
The tools are there, but it's cold. The parent, you, I, I, I can't imagine that the, the ticket, they're really going to all be ticketed and that they're actually going to turn off the cars. You know, if you turn it off, you have to then turn it on, you go a foot forward, you turn it off, you wait, you go, turn it on, go another foot forward. Meanwhile, the air conditioning and the heat is, is off, you know, as a practical matter, I just don't see that really is.
Well, just, just two comments to that, Commissioner Wells. Number one, the Norwalk Police Department is very responsive to concerns that are raised, whether it be traffic, whether it be improper parking, speeding, and if this is an issue of a significant concern, if it's brought to their attention, I'm sure they would be responsive. And many of the newer cars, mine included, has a feature. If you, you, you come to a stop, it turns off. So that's even the mechanism and the, the technology is catching up to the three-minute idling, and many of those vehicles are already equipped with that feature. So I would like to think that that will, that will lessen as we move forward, and that the vehicles are all equipped with that automatic turnoff feature.
Marissa, did you have something you wanted to say? I, I thought you had your hand raised.
I did, I'm sorry, I apologize, I did not want to interrupt. I just wanted to, on the record, clear up that, and I think this is just lumping it together, but the city T M P department and myself conducted two separate reviews. There were times we came together to discuss with the applicant, but the memorandum with requests for funding, A K R F did not review the cost of a construction of a roundabout. We did not suggest a certain dollar value associated with construction of a roundabout. We simply stated that that roundabout is a better operation than the always stop control under the sensitivity analysis that was conducted, which is exactly what Michael Glonty and Steve and the Nation General also confirmed. So just wanted to make clear that this dollar value that's being floated around did not come from A K R F in coordination with nothing. My memorandum is on operations only. If asked, I could tell you what the cost of a roundabout would be, but that would be far more involved, just like Michael hasn't assessed it yet either.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this point from Commission members?
I have comments, but I prefer to wait until the public hearing is closed.
That's fine.
So that I don't want to get into a back and forth.
Okay. No problem, Michael, that's fine. Anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman, we have nothing else, and, and yes, Ms. Tarallo is correct, that, that $500,000 figure came from T M P. So I, if I lumped her into that, I apologize.
Okay.
We have nothing further, we would hope that you could close the hearing tonight, and if there's any possibility to undertake action, that would be great. If not, I suspect it would go over to your August 17th meeting.
We have a pretty busy agenda for that meeting, but let's, let's see where we end up this evening.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, with that, we'll, we'll close the hearing. And we'll move on to discussion.
Do you, do you want to make a motion to enter discussion? Or should we, can I, I have things to say, and it's not going to be on the motion to approve. So I want to just, I don't know what the best moment would be.
We can begin with a, a general conversation among our.
All right, I'm going to say $500,000 is peanuts compared to what would be needed to turn this neighborhood into a neighborhood that could absorb another huge school with 650 students. Granted, that's eventual, but I'm sure this will be successful if it was going. I wanted to support this application from the moment it came in because I think it's a great idea. There's nothing wrong with the idea. I think it's the wrong location. It is fitting a square peg in a round hole. $5 million wouldn't be enough to turn that network of Indian trails, which have been turned into paved roads, curvy, tight, narrow streets like Philo, like Old Rock, Ponus. I could go down the list. Nursery, West Norwalk Road, all of these roads suffer a burden from a decision that Norwalk made 40 years ago to build regional draws on Route 1, big box stores. And I'm not passing any judgment on any current application in that statement. And I'm not passing any judgment on any current application in that statement. I'm simply saying. There is regional traffic as the application, as the uh public has stated. Traffic that flows through this neighborhood flies through, I wouldn't say flow, it flies. On its way to uh Home Depot, et cetera, on Route One. And has turned the neighborhood into basically a giant cut through with speeding traffic and all of that. If you were to ask me what would be the worst possible use for this beautiful site? I would say a school. Parents are not normal drivers. They are rushed, they are stressed. They are trying to get somewhere. They've just sat in traffic on the Merritt Parkway, which is jammed up every morning right at the same time. That we're gonna be, we're being told that all this traffic is gonna arrive off the Merritt Parkway, you know, with. Regardless of the zip code analysis, because I think that's debatable in terms of. Uh, surveys that were sent out to Norwalk residents, et cetera. I, I have a feeling a, a majority, most of these people are gonna be coming from other towns. This project, uh, this site is not designed for this use. No way. I'm a landscape architect. I'm licensed in Connecticut, New York, and New Jersey. I've spent forty. One years, I cannot believe it, uh, envisioning things. That's what I get paid to do. And sometimes people question my vision, but I, most of the time, I have, I, I envision things. I cannot for the life of me envision this school. On this site. One main reason is that little road that comes out and goes over the bridge and you're gonna have. They, they need to spend two or three million dollars just to make that road wide, twice as wide, that is on site. Regardless of what we talk about out, out in the neighborhood. I, every, every reason I am so dead set against this project is in the record. It's already in the record and this is not a reflection on the applicant's uh representation, on the consultants. On the, on, on anything. This is a simply a reflection on what is in the record already. And I could not agree more with the public and everything they said, even tonight. Uh, you know, here Paul Cantor and, and Betsy Brenn. Absolutely, this is not going to work and I cannot imagine the stresses. In this neighborhood that are gonna be formed by parents speeding through here. Trying to get their kids to school. I have a little daycare center around the corner from me that opened up a, a, a head start program at Columbus. I mean, I'm sorry. Uh, Ben Franklin School, we're allowed to call that Ben Franklin still. Um, the uh, but uh, uh, you know, basically it's the old neon building around the corner. When that daycare center opened uh, like three or four years ago, our neighborhood quality changed completely. In the morning and in the afternoon, we have parents speeding. At high speeds with, to get their kids or to drop them off. And we can note, we, we, we had to change our habits in terms of walking dog times, et cetera. I took an oath. When I became a, a planning and zoning commissioner to protect the public health and safety of Norwalk. And I cannot sleep at night for the rest of my life if I approve this because I will fear. Every single day this school is open, that somebody is gonna be flying stressed out, having a cup of coffee, have a screaming kid in the back. Maybe another kid, who knows? After being on the Merritt Parkway, we're flying down from New Canaan and they're late for work and everything's stressful. Because that's what parents are when they're taking their kids to school. And they're not gonna be coming by bus. I don't believe that for a second, even though little buses, I think this is gonna be primarily parents. And the Winston Prep that Galen Wells mentioned, that has a hundred and twenty-five students. It's one fifth. Maybe one-sixth of the size of, the one-fifth, twenty percent of the size of this school. And there's backups and problems, et cetera. And that, you know, so I, I love the idea. I don't think this is the right spot. This should be over on Long Ridge Road or High Ridge Road, uh, uh, and uh, you know. Abandoned a corp, or let's say an empty corporate building that was designed for peak flow. I worked for H O K, Helmut Obata Kasabam in the nineteen eighties. Uh, I was in my twenties. I was, I lived in Manhattan. It was a fancy job. I went to this big office with two hundred people. And their pride and joy was the G T E building in Norwalk, a place I had never heard of at the time. Cause I'm from New Jersey originally. And we took a van up here in nineteen eighty-seven and to look at the site. And the conversation with all the head designers, the architects who designed this product, this building. And the landscape architects, the whole department was in that van. It was like, you know, I don't know, how many, eight, ten, twelve people. I don't remember, it's so long ago. But I do remember the conversation. This project won awards because it was a quiet. Slipping a quiet corporate use into a residential neighborhood. And when we pulled into the narrow lane, I remember specifically how proud they were that they made it fit in. Those are not, those entrances, white ways on Little Fox and on Weed Street are not designed for high traffic use. This is going to be a tragedy and I, and I just cannot support it. I am, I, I, sorry. I want to say that uh, there are thirteen uh. Uh, actual uh characteristics listed in the special permit. Uh, thing and it's, it's a A through M. This does not reach the level of. Uh, nine of those. So I'm not gonna go through them. But I, I believe that my decision to not support this is supported by everything that's in the record. And our own regulations. And I would hope that they could find another site. In another town, or if it's in Norwalk, I have no idea where, but uh, I have a feeling that this is the wrong use for this site. And I, it breaks my heart. I've lost sleep over this. I've never. Put more thought into something, but I don't, not trying to persuade any other commissioners here. I am telling you what I feel and I would never be able to vote for this. I'm done.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, comments from the other commission members?
I have a comment. I'm not gonna repeat everything that Michael said, but I happen to agree with it. Um, but I did come into the last two meetings um with this idea in mind. And that was if one of those breakaway blockades could be put in front of the Little Fox entryway. I would listen with an open mind, um, the traffic reports, although I couldn't see how that could work on. Fellow Street and all those other little streets we were talking about. Um, but then as the hearing progressed, we realized that there's gonna be no changes to any of the buildings. And the buildings cannot accommodate the, even the small school buses and trucks. So the people on Little Fox are going to have all of that traffic. And like Mike said, I, I've gone there a number of times. I've been on every road that was there. And I just can't vote for it.
Alright, thank you, Richard.
I, he needs to say, I totally agree with Mike and with Richard.
Okay, thank you, Galen. Uh, anyone else?
Yep, Lou.
Sure.
I very respectfully disagreed with um Mike and Richard and Galen, I guess if they're in the same camp. If this were a Norwalk city school, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. It would just go through. Silvermine Elementary School is on a small street. Waiton Elementary School is on a small twisty curvy street. Uh, Cranberry School has tiny little know-a-lot lane. Um, I'm trying to think of the others. Some of the other ones, Brookside is on a big street. Nathan Hale is on a large street that have two other schools. All of these schools have traffic. And all of those parents probably sit and idle at those schools too. The, so for us to say that, you know, this school is somehow different or wrong. Because it's an independent school filling an incredibly beautiful location. I think that's hypocritical of us. Um, the city of Norwalk, like many other communities, we have enforcement issues for traffic problems. And you know, we've met the enemy and they is us. People speed, people blow through stop signs, people don't obey uh traffic lights. That's an enforcement issue. We can't stop living. Um, you know, if, if Wegmans goes through on Connecticut Avenue. They have a five hundred space parking lot with people coming and going all day long. So how is, you know, a school that has eventually six hundred and fifty students that come in the morning and go at night? How is that worse? We have a confluence up there on Richard's Avenue with perhaps the Community College. The um Sikh Temple and the Fox Run Elementary School. Should we do some more traffic studies for that one intersection perhaps? Uh, but I think that this is a, a very good use of a property.
Uh, Tammy, we've lost you. J J, I, I don't know if you can override Tammy or not, but you can try.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll jump off once she comes back on. So, um. I, 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 I'm excited about the prospect of um a new school to Norwalk. Um, one that would elevate its presence and one that would bring in more people. Um, that would accommodate that price point to those families that are seeking. Um, to house, to, to involve their uh middle schoolers and high schoolers on the same property. But um, I feel that may, may, maybe the rollout is what the neighbors are afraid of, that it'll be too much too soon. But um, the attorney did say that they plan to roll it out at a slow bait, on a slow pace. And you know, I don't know, this, this, um, Attorney Sushi, did you say it's gonna be eight to nine years before you reach full enrollment? Uh, she can't hear me.
Yeah, she won't be, she can't answer you now, J J.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. So, um, I mean, that's, that, I, I mean, my opinion, that's a lot of time to work out the kinks, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, other comments uh from uh. Other commissioners? Um, okay, um. I think that um, I'm uh, I'm gonna ask, is there a motion? Um, to uh. Approve, approve this project or uh to review the um. Um, what has been put together by the staff for this? Anyone want to uh move to a resolution?
Well, uh, sorry, Lou, uh, let me just say, I, I'll, I can make a motion to uh. Move the uh. Resolution to approve. But also uh. Uh, with the condition that we would then. Have uh the motion to deny, cause I think you're gonna read those into the record. Is that correct or, or do you?
Not, not necessarily. Uh, we have a motion to deny if you want to. Um, uh, make that mo, you know, make that motion.
Well, effectively, uh, the, the result is gonna be the same vote either way, it sounds like, right? So.
I think so.
Yeah, uh, I would be, I, I'm. I'm not gonna make the motion to approve. Sorry.
That's okay. I, i- is there a motion to approve so that uh we can act on this one way or the other?
Is Tammy back?
Pardon me?
Is Tammy back?
No.
Oh, that's a good question.
And then just so you guys, you don't, you do not have to vote on this application tonight. You. You, you closed the hearing, you technically have thirty-five days from today to, to make your decision.
So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna motion to approve.
Alright, uh. Is there a second? I get with, without Tammy, we're not going to have a second. Um. Uh, and I don't feel comfortable moving forward on this without uh having her uh participation.
I, my electricity just went out. And my wifi was down, so I was searching for my cellphone and then it came back up. So that's why I disappeared and reappeared.
Okay.
So it may have to do with the heat.
Well, it's, it's seven fifty. Let's, let's give Tammy another two minutes. Uh, to uh, see if she can make it back on. Uh, if not, uh, we'll. Uh, we can, we can defer action on this uh to. Uh, if it's just the action, we probably could handle it uh at our uh next meeting on the seventeen.
Well, let, let me just say this, something that is very important here. In that uh, once the public hearing is closed and before we vote. We are what we used to call in a cone of silence. We are not to talk, read, discuss. Have any conversation with anyone between the closing of the public hearing and the vote. I think that's gonna put a burden on this commission and this, in our community to uh. Over, over the next week, two weeks, however long it takes to vote. That is gonna be a, 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 a standard that's gonna be impossible to reach. And I'm not suggesting we move. But before Tammy comes back on at all, I'm suggesting that delaying this until. Another date is going to jeopardize uh that cone of silence that is required of all of us. Because inevitably, there's gonna be, there's gonna be publicity.
With all, with all due respect, that cone of silence. Begin, begins. Okay, that cone of silence begins when we begin um. Uh, any discussion of uh this matter. It uh should have been in place. Throughout uh the, the last couple of weeks. Uh, we are not permitted to uh discuss these matters with uh. Uh outsiders, uh, or frankly, for that matter, even among ourselves.
Yes, now I, I agree with you. That cone of silence did start when the public hearing opened. However. It is more important between the time that we close the public hearing and when we vote. Even more important because we've already put our thoughts on the record and people are gonna respond to those. And uh, or not all of us, but you know, certainly I did. And I, and there is going to be. Uh, publicity that, you know, it's gonna be hard to ignore. And I, and I think it's just gonna put a burden on the commission. To uh, you know, people are gonna be, I, I honestly think there's gonna be public trying to sway votes, to be honest.
Yes, thankfully she is, she is back.
Good. If, and like I would say, if that's, if that's the case, that's our burden. Um, I simply do not, do not maintain conversation with anyone about any of these matters. Um, uh, until after we have uh, uh, voted on a matter.
Agreed.
Okay, with that, Tammy, um, now that you're back, um. I asked if there is a motion um to uh. Uh, move this matter forward um by uh voting uh on the staff resolution.
Could I ask a question first?
Sure.
Um, and, and my apologies. Um, so we had a power outage at my house. There was one in downtown earlier today. And I lost all internet connection for a little while. I was trying to get you on my phone, but that wasn't working either. So my apologies, but. Did anybody speak after me?
No, I don't think so.
None of the other commissioners made any?
J J, J J made a motion um uh to uh move the resolution. Uh, the, the resolution for approval. Uh, then you disappeared.
It wasn't intentional.
No, we understand you weren't the only one that went offline.
Okay.
Disappeared too, Tammy.
Right.
Don't feel bad about it.
Went off as well?
Yes.
Okay.
We're looking for a second to J J's motion.
Okay.
Tammy wasn't finished speaking.
I, I really wasn't finished.
Let's go ahead.
That's okay. We now have a motion before us and people can say whatever they wish. Um.
But it needs to be seconded.
As long as. Can, that want to speak are able to speak.
Brian, can you pull up the resolution, please?
Sure.
Can you make it just a bit larger?
Sure thing.
Okay, that's fine.
Just, just so everyone, the, the red text, I apologize, I sent out, like, right before the meeting, so there were a couple, um, amendments to the, to that particular piece of the resolution, as well as a modification of one of the conditions.
And does this contain those changes, Steve?
Correct, what, what Brian has up, yeah, good job. What he's got up there shows the, um, two, two clauses that are um, new, as well as the, the condition that was new.
Okay, um, let's keep going. Uh, Steve, I don't know when you came back, uh, uh, but there are, there appear to be strong feelings on both sides of, of, uh, this issue, I wanted to get uh, the resolution out, uh, so that, um, we're in a position, uh, to, uh, take action if we want to. Okay, um, Brian, can you go back to the, um, uh, beginning?
The clauses or the?
Yeah, the clause, that, no, I don't, we, yeah, starting there. Uh, Steve, what Attorney Sachi, uh, has said regarding, um, I guess she said it regarding both, both the sidewalks and the, um, uh, roundabout, is, uh, they would like to be able to provide funding um, a number to be determined, I would assume, between, uh, our staff and, uh, and Attorney Sachi. Uh, over a period of time. Uh, I think, uh, given, uh, that the school, uh, is, would, um, ramp up enrollment over a period of time. Uh, it's, it doesn't seem unreasonable to me uh, once you, a number is agreed on, again, assuming we approve this. Um, that, that they be given a number of years to, uh, uh, provide the funding. Uh, however, with regard to the sidewalks, um, it, I think we ought to treat this like we treat any other public school. You need the sidewalks immediately. Um, you can't provide, uh, the, at least in my view, you can't provide the sidewalks, uh, incrementally. Um, so I, you know, that's where I, I, I stand on this as a resolution, regardless of whether, uh, uh, I'm gonna support it or not.
Uh, I can, I can tell you, I did talk with, um, TNP today, uh, you know, regarding that early was hinged the conversation around that, uh, condition number seven. Uh, their thoughts were that half a million dollar figure is probably kind of the low end of you, they, you know, basically you could, from their conversations with a, an engineering firm, you can build a roundabout for that value, they probably would look to use that money to leverage other funding sources and something that they actually would really would be bet- more beneficial to the city, so that five hundred is kind of the lower end of, you know, the, the minimum we would seek. Um, regarding the staging, their thought was, and I think it makes sense that by the time things ramp up, you're already dealing with the impacts at that stage, so you're, you know, the enrollment reaches level X, but the impacts have already started, and you haven't, um, enacted some of the improvements yet, so there's a period of time where there's neighborhood impact as a result of the, uh, increased traffic, so that was kind of the rationale. We, we did talk about that for a little bit today.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just have to interject this, cause Steve, you missed what I had said, uh, earlier, I believe you were not on, right? So, I said five million dollars wouldn't be enough to turn a network of Indian trails turned into paved streets into a system, a network that could handle speeding traffic with stressed-out parents, getting twice a day, getting in and out of a site that was never designed for peak flow, is not designed as an office building for, for, uh, for shift work, was designed as a corporate retreat. Anyway, I just wanted to make that clear, I don't think five million dollars would be enough, and would we even want to have the entire character of this neighborhood changed with wide sidewalks everywhere, ripping out all the stone walls, et cetera? I'm a big sidewalk proponent, but is, I mean, i- is, is the character of this historic area going to be forever altered, and, and who's gonna pay for it? I'm sorry, I, I, I was all saying that because I am so dead set against this project for lots of reasons, for public health and safety being the main one, that, uh, that I, that I put that out there. I'm just reiterating for your benefit, Steve.
Sure, no, and, and I think staff sensed that there was, um, concern and conflict within the commission on, on this application, which, uh, like personally, I don't like to do two resolutions, cause it's twice the work, but in this one case, I felt that, you know, there wasn't a clear direction one way or the other, and I think uh, a case could be made for both, both sides of the argument, so that's why I put for, um, both resolutions, to give you a sense of where we were thinking.
Thank you, understood.
Uh, is there further discussion on this resolution?
Lou, are we voting on each individual item or the whole thing?
No, I, uh, proposing that we, uh, vote on, uh, the entire, uh, resolution. Um, and, excuse me, uh, if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't pass, it's, it seems to me, unless I'm incorrect about this, Steve, that it's the same as a denial.
Yeah, I, and, and you could, uh, uh, at the bottom, so I, I'm assuming, I, I missed the initial motion, but I'm assuming the initial motion was to approve the resolution with the condit- conditions offered, but just scrolling down a little bit more, there's an alternate resolution if you felt you wanted to take a separate motion, I'm just, that was included with the materials you got.
Yes.
Well, can, I mean, miss, my Commissioner Mousak has made some statements, we understand he's opposed to it, and that's fine, but who? If, if, you know, five million dollars to fix all the streets around there, if that's such a priority of the city and the safety of the schoolchildren in Norwalk, then why don't we have that around every other school that we have? I mean, look at the little footpath at Silver Mine Elementary School, there is really no official sidewalk in front of Rowayton Elementary School. I mean, I think it's being hypocritical of us to pick on this, like, this is the only school in the city that's going to have streets that are going to have cars on them, we have an enforcement problem. And I think I leave it at that.
Tammy.
I was referring to road width and lack of sidewalks completely, there's not even a sidewalk.
Respectively, Wilson Avenue is a curvy road with a nineteen seventy foot path. There is a stoplight at the school, I walk on it every day, people come flying down the hill from Highland Avenue. I've had the police sit at the end of Indian Spring Road many times, it doesn't change the behavior of the drivers. It's nothing exclusive to this particular location, and if we want to charge this applicant a half a million dollars because they're adding to the traffic at that intersection, then why aren't we asking uh, an, an applicant that recently was a, an application that was recently approved for Richards Avenue, right up by that intersection to do the same, when the school isn't exactly right at this intersection, yes, it's going to be impacted, why don't we ask Fox Run to contribute as well?
I do agree, we have to have more, better sidewalks around all the schools, absolutely. But this is a private school where most nine, I, I'm just, most of the people are gonna be driven in private cars.
Mike, I think we're making too many guesses, it seems to me that many children at the, uh, schools along Highland Avenue are also driven by their parents too, and they have the opportunity to take the school bus. They don't, I don't, you know, we can't as planning and zoning authorities force people to take the bus, it's just what people choose to do, and it happens at every single school in the city, whether it's independent or public.
Those schools already exist, they're not going in new, so, well, Rowayton School has been there, when was it built? You know, seventy years ago?
It was moved a long time ago, yep, but, but Galen, we're putting a new.
School built.
We're putting a new school.
Having existed for fifty, sixty years, and so we're trying to improve them as best we can, but we're not approving them as a new use.
Yeah, but we are going, we did approve a new school at the Hatch and Bailey. You know, did we?
That'll be a site designed from scratch, completely new. This is a site that can't, already can't handle, I've been there for events, when people try to get over that narrow bridge by the pond, and they wait for people coming the other way, how is, how is this flow, I, I didn't see that addressed anywhere, where they were gonna address the narrow road that's gonna be for, uh, for two-way traffic. Uh, anyway, that's what I'm saying, I can't envision this thing, it's a square peg in a round hole, and everything that I am opposed to this project is in the re- on the record, it's not conjecture, it's not guessing. It is, it is, except the fact that stressed-out parents drive fast, I did, that is conjecture, but I mean, I, who's gonna argue with me on that? Because we know that that's true, right?
We're, we're going, we're going back and forth on this. Um, no one, no one is bringing up, uh, new information. Um, is there anyone else, any, uh, any of the other commission, uh, members um, wish to speak on this matter? And I, I, I think if not, um, we need to take a vote.
I, I think, I think Darius signaled.
I was going to suggest this.
Go ahead, Darius, you just muted yourself.
I was, I was going to suggest we do the same, get to, get to a vote, I don't foresee anyone's mind, uh, being changed.
Okay, thank you. JJ, you wanted to say something?
No, once again, I'm advocating for other people, thank you, Darius.
I need an advocate, JJ, can I? All right. So, uh, Steve, as our staff, uh, based on your conversations with TNP, um, uh, you're not suggesting, uh, that we change uh, that, uh, five hundred thousand dollar, uh, number in the way I suggested, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, and I, I understand, and I'm, I am sympathetic to the applicants, you know, need to outlay a significant amount of funding that they probably didn't, um, anticipate, at, you know, at, at this stage of the project. Um, but I, I think the point raised by TNP, I think, is a valid.
Okay, then I'll, uh, I'll drop my objection to that language. Um, are we ready to, uh, uh, vote on this matter? Brian, is there something you wanted to say, I just see you unmuted yourself.
Yeah, just, just, uh, to remind you that Darius and JJ are eligible to be seated to vote.
Oh, yeah, yes, uh, Steve, I meant, it, it won't be in, uh, the record, but I mentioned, uh, uh, that, uh, Brian, uh, is, uh, no longer, uh, a commission member. Uh, so it's likely that in most of our meetings, going forward until we see replacements, that, um, uh, uh, they will be able to vote on, um, matters. Um, thank you for that. All right, uh, I think we'd better do this as a roll call.
Can't just say leave.
Okay, and just to clarify, this is a vote, yay or nay, on the resolution with conditions to approve?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, and I think I see everybody on my screen, I'm gonna start, and, and I'll start with Mr. Williams.
No.
Ms. Wells?
No.
Mr. Rowena?
No.
Mr. Mousak?
No.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
And I don't, I, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Langaus, I don't see you.
I'm here and I vote yes.
Oh, sorry, there you are, Ms. Langaus is a yes, and Mr. Schulman.
Yes. What does that give us, Steve?
I started, I muted Steve trying to unmute myself, re-in favor, more opposed.
Yeah.
All right, uh, the, uh, motion fails. Uh, the project is, uh, not approved.
And I wanna add, it's a great idea.
You know what?
Wrong location.
Stop.
All right, let's move on, uh, we've still got a, uh, a, a number of significant, uh, items here on the agenda. Um, the next item, Board of Education Zoning Regulation Text Amendment uh, to revise, uh, Articles eighty, ninety, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and forty for regulations pertaining to maximum allowable height, setbacks, more structures, and pu- uh, parking, minimum parking requirements for public school and municipal uses and structures. Um, Mr. Low? Are you gonna make the presentation?
Uh, I think, um, good evening, um, Alan Low, on behalf of the City of Norwalk, uh, for this item, we have solicited help of, uh, assistance of, um, uh, Attorney Blank to, uh, to present this item to the, to the commission and to the public.
Okay, uh, Ms. Attorney Blank, uh, before you speak, um, I, I, I explained at the beginning of the meeting, um, how public hearings, um, go forward, but, uh, uh, there may be people who've joined us, um, and after I made that, uh, those comments, so I think I'd better do it again, um, e- even though we all would like this to move forward quickly. Um, the, the way we conduct public hearings is, uh, the applicant or the applicant's representative uh, will give a presentation. Um, and, uh, throughout, uh, that presentation, the members of the commission um, have, uh, the right to, uh, raise any questions they wish. Uh, when that presentation is completed, um, we will, uh, open it up to the public for public comment. Uh, we don't place, uh, time limit, uh, on how long you can speak, but we ask that you make an attempt to, uh, uh, keep your, uh, comments as brief as possible while making all the points, uh, that, uh, you believe are important to you. Um, uh, we also ask that, uh, if your comments are essentially, uh, similar or the same as a person who's spoken before you, uh, the, uh, that, uh, you keep them briefer still. Um, and, uh, we, we ask, uh, that, uh, you provide us with your, uh, name and address um, when you, uh, begin to speak, and, and that, uh, we just keep a civil attitude uh, throughout, uh, the comments. Um, once, uh, everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, um, we turn it, uh, back to, uh, the developer or developer's representative uh, for, uh, rebuttal, uh, comments. Um, after, uh, during which, again, the commission members are free to ask, uh, questions. Pardon me. Uh, we then close, uh, the hearing, uh, and, uh, do our best, uh, to, uh, uh, reach a, uh, conclusion, um, uh, uh, a- afterward, before moving on to the next public hearing. Um, with that, um, with apologies to Attorney Blank, uh, turn it over to you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, yes, so Adam Blank, I'm the attorney, uh, uh, helping the, the city and the Board of Ed out, uh, with these, uh, proposed text amendments, I, I live here at, uh, forty-nine Bartlett Avenue in Norwalk. Um, the, what's in front of you are, uh, a number of, uh, regulation text, uh, changes that would help the city streamline the school construction process, uh, on future projects. As you know, the cities, um, they started a number of years ago, but it started, uh, committing significant resources towards uh, rebuilding the, the aging, um, school infrastructure in the city, um, and the. Um, and the, the proposals that are before you um are intended to uh make that process uh run a little bit smoother, um eliminate the, the need for um common variances, which have been required on some prior projects. Um, they may not solve all the needs for variances in the future or for other text changes in the future, but the hope is that these, these are the big ones that will make um, make the process more predictable uh for everyone and, and a more sort of efficient process. Uh, Alan was already uh introduced to you. Um, I believe we've got uh Dan Phillips and/or Jim Giuliani, Giuliano, um, the construction management folks with the City of Norwalk. There's Jim, I see. Um, and uh, and, and between Jim and Alan, uh, any questions that you have or the public has, uh, hopefully we can answer those or, and they can clean up anything I miss in this presentation, which I promise I'll, I'll keep fairly uh brief this evening. Um, the uh, on, on these projects, and some of you heard this at the preliminary meeting, although not all the commissioners were there, and I don't know that it any of the public may or may not have been listening, but these school projects um are very significant um cost. Um, and timing is pretty important on them or critically important on the projects. Um, the city and their consultants uh come up with uh, you know, what they start working on the architecturals and the site plan um in connection with the Board of Ed and the, the sort of educational needs and the enrollment projections and to try to come up with the facility that's going to suit the, the local sort of needs. Uh, but also, and very important is to then comply with the sort of fairly rigorous state standards for reimbursement. You know, the state will reimburse at this percentage for this and at that percentage for the other. And if it's not this size, the state will reimburse for it. So you're trying to sort of um fit all of those pieces together. Um, and, and as you, I think, are all aware, the state recently changed the reimbursement rate for Norwalk. Um, and so it's, it's really in Norwalk's interest to be able to meet those um, those reimbursement rates um or to meet the criteria to be eligible for reimbursement. Um, on top of all of that, there's various deadlines on the projects um that need to be met in order to get funding both at the state level and the local level. Um, and uh missing out on a, on a, on a cycle for a year um literally is millions of dollars of added expense um by, 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 by slowing down the process. Um, and on, on top of that, you know, most of these schools, not, not the proposed school for the new um neighborhood school in South Norwalk, which would be on its, on a sort of a, a new, a new lot, but, but most of the school construction projects that are likely to occur in the foreseeable future will occur on existing school parcels um where kids are in class. And there's already a school built there so that um, you know, we've, the, the city has a challenge of trying to be as least disruptive of the school process, um, knowing that ideally you're going to be building a school that's on the same lot, but not, you don't have to demo the school, keep the kids out of school for a year or two while you engage in the construction where you can kind of stage it so that the kids can continue on in school. But in order to do that, it gets, it makes it even more challenging to fit it within the zoning um, existing zoning regulations because you're not starting with a blank slate. You're, 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 you're putting a building next to what was originally meant to be the, the main structure. Um, so um, I think with that sort of introduction, um, I'd like to just share my screen and just sort of walk through the, the, the proposed changes. I assume that's up and you guys can see it? Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so uh, the, the, the first uh proposed uh amendment is to change the, the building uh height for a uh public uh school or municipal building. Right now, the maximum height in a residential zone is fifty feet. We'd ask for that to be increased to sixty-five feet with the, with the maximum number of stories being four feet. Um, the, with the stories, I mean, I, while there are story requirements for lots of regs in Norwalk, I think that, I hope that that's sort of irrelevant and that it's the maximum height is what you primarily care about. Um, it's anticipated that, that this increase would be uh necessary for high school projects. Um, uh, very unlikely for elementary or middle schools. Those buildings are not as tall. Uh, additionally, um, this, this cap is not like a average height. Um, it's, this is for, you know, at any one place in the building. Is it going to be sixty-five feet above the average grade? Um, and so it's not, again, it's not anticipated that the, the city would be building uh schools sixty-five feet across, you know, at, at all points, but that there may be points that, that reach sixty-five feet. Um, this uh, that, that height, which it, which is high, um, is mitigated by the substantial setbacks that are required for uh schools. And I'll talk about that because that is one of the amendments as well. Um, we, we are asking for the, the setback uh for public schools and municipal buildings um to be no more than eighty feet for front and rear and no more than forty feet, a forty-foot setback for off-street parking and loading facilities. So no structures within eighty feet. But you can have, at, once you hit forty feet from the property line, you can have off-street parking and loading, including like the parking aisles and backup spaces. Um, the single-family houses, you know, they, they're around thirty to forty feet. So again, we're doubling that uh or, or more for the front and setback. Uh, and then the, the, the rear is, is again doubled as well. It's eighty feet and, and, and then forty just for loading. Um, uh, to give you a graphic sort of perspective on it, uh, person on the street, this is a, a, a residential building set at the, the minimum setback, but built to the, the, the typical max height for a single-family home. You've got the front yard setback where cars can be parked, um, you know, in front of the garage. Um, but you've got your, your cars here. This is what the sightline would be with what that we proposed, that first forty feet where you, you can have cars and on the residential, that's still going to be, you know, no, no structures and no parking here. The next forty feet where the residents would be, you could have uh parking and drive aisles. And then back at eighty feet, this would be the max, if you had a sixty-five-foot building at the closest spot possible and with the sixty-five foot at the closest part to the property line, th- this is the difference in sightline. So it's, it's a little bit more, you know, in the view, but not, it's not, it's not much of a difference in the sightline. And it's, of course, anticipated that for these projects that there will be, particularly if you had a situation like this, that you're going to have some real landscaping in here that's going to uh block partially or completely that sightline. So you're, you're not going to see it because you've got a forty-foot setback here. Um, so that that's the, the, the setback uh amendment for the main structures. Um, and on some school buildings have accessory buildings, um, concession stand, a storage shed, uh, like these lockers or bathrooms. Again, it's more at the high schools, but not necessarily exclusively and, and the, the, the so those accessory structures, there's, the rules are, are the same as they would be for residences in that they, they can't exceed fifteen feet in height. So you're talking about pretty small structures. Um, the, the change that we're asking for is that those um, that the setback for them be no more than forty feet from the front property line and fifteen from any side ER property line. Um, and that, that's going to be pretty far back. Um, and it's no more sort of uh obtrusive for the, for any neighbors than you would if, if your neighbor on your single-family residence put a shed in their backyard. Um, uh, parking, um, right now for, for the schools, it's one and a half spaces per worker employed. Um, and at the high schools, it's one parking space. It's that plus one parking space for every four students of school capacity. Um, so that essentially assumes that you, you would have every, i- in a four-year high school, every senior would have a car and would drive to school. Um, and you'd have every teacher taking a car and a half to school or a car to school with a significant amount of visitor spots. Um, that's not been the, 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 that need has not actually materialized at the schools. Um, and the, they, we'd like to be able to have the ability um to, to reduce that to one space per employee um as the minimum. Um, but with the expectation that the, the actual numbers provided are going to vary greatly. Um, I think, um, Alan mentioned to some of you previously, just to give you some perspective here um on that, the, like, as an example, the, the existing Norwalk High. Alan, how many spaces did that have? Does that have?
There's four, I think it's around four hundred and twenty-five roughly.
And the proposed.
It's about four, four fifty.
Right, and, and obviously it's still in the design phase, but, but that's the kind of numbers that, that, that we're looking at. Um, so it is projected to have more at the new school than the old school, um, for the high school at least. Um, it, it's not going to be one per employee. Um, and, you know, unlike sort of private developers, um, there's no sort of financial incentive here to, to shortchange on parking and the parking. Um, the, the principals and the, the city and the schools can really control parking. You know, are teachers allowed to park at the school? I think they're always going to be. But is there going to be student parking and how much? They can regulate how much, how much student parking uh is permitted. Um, it's not the kind of thing that's going to create a neighborhood issue because the school's going to control who, who's parking there. Um, the uh um, and so those, those are really the only um uh text uh changes um that we have proposed. I, I'll just point out that in the um, the, the, the P O C D, I, I won't go through it, but, but it's sort of replete with reference after reference to um uh taking steps to help uh in further implement the, the facilities upgrades of the schools as a priority for the uh city. Um, and, and there's, I think, a pretty much a whole chapter on it. Um, so this, these changes will certainly uh comply with the P O C D and, and are uh sort of necessary for the city at this point. Uh, that's, that's the presentation unless Alan or Jim thinks I've missed anything. Otherwise, we can take questions from you folks or if the chairman wants to take it to the public uh for comment.
Commission members, um, do we have any uh questions for Attorney Blank? I mean, we heard this at our last uh meeting, um, when we did ask questions. But if there are any uh remaining questions, uh, feel free to ask. If not, we'll go to the public po- portion of the meeting. Okay, um, uh, Brian, you want to uh, uh, explain to the uh public how they can? There are very few public. Uh, but why don't you, i- if anyone wants to comment, uh, explain to them how to do that?
Sure, so um, for anyone from the public who'd like to speak, you could use the Raise Your Hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. And if you're on a phone, you could hit star nine. Don't think so. I don't think you have anyone, Lou.
Okay, um.
Before you do close, I, I, I will just read uh the D P referral. I'll at least post it on the screen. Um, so because technically the zone change does impact all zones, we had to refer it to you deep. Um, who made the finding of consistency. I'll post this so that it's just on the record.
Okay.
We also referred it to Harbor Management Commission, um, who made a finding of consistency with the Harbor Management Plan and referred it to Wes Cog, who had no comments.
Okay, Attorney Blank, any rebuttal?
I, I, no, sir. Thank you.
Uh, all right, uh, can I have a um motion to uh approve the uh changes uh recommended uh by uh, uh, the Board of Education?
So moved.
All right, uh, Richard has moved. Is there a second? Please?
Second.
JJ uh has seconded. Uh, here's the uh draft resolution. Basically, it's uh, a, a copy of what's just been presented to us with, without the commentary. Um, clearly, there's no oppo- there appears to be no opposition to this. However, um, these are uh, uh, important and significant changes. Um, so uh, let's do a roll call on it.
Here, let's see. Um, Mr. Williams?
You're muted, Darius.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Langgalls?
Jane.
Uh, Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
And Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
Six in favor, no opposition and one abstention.
Right, right. Uh, I do want to just a comment on uh Mr. Lowe's ability to hold his breath. Um, it's really quite amazing.
Well, thank you, Lou.
With that, we'll uh move on.
Mr. Chairman, before we do, I just wanted to say one thing. Um, I'm not sure whether this counts or not, but I did watch the uh YouTube video from the last meeting, and I did watch this, that was going on, because I did miss the last meeting.
Um, I had forgotten that, and I appreciate uh, uh, your mentioning it.
Yes.
Okay, uh, twenty twenty-two dash uh thirty-three R, Norwalk Police Department Building Zone Regulation Text Amendment to Article eighty to allow the uh, for EMS communication antennas to be installed on existing public utility towers. Um, Lieutenant uh Blake, are you going to make the presentation?
I'm sure, uh, a- as I spoke uh to this board about uh last month, uh, this is part of our overall uh replacement of the current emergency services radio system uh that serves the police department, the fire department, Norwalk Hospital EMS, Rowayton Volunteer Fire Department, and our Department of Public Works. Uh, this is, our current system is at end of life. Um, this has been a project that's been in the works for approximately uh six to seven years at this point. Uh, and we are through a phase one of this replacement project. And this is part of phase two, actually, operationalizing the uh installation of towers and the rest of the infrastructure that'll put us onto our new system and bring us into uh, you know, our, our current uh two thousand twenties here. Um, that'll certainly improve our, our ability to speak to our neighboring towns, but moreover, it'll allow us to speak to each other um and certainly work uh cooperatively and utilize similar radio ch- channels during large events that may occur in Norwalk such as our, you know, our, our hurricanes and such that do affect us uh citywide where we all work together hand in hand to ensure the safety of uh the community. This particular um tower is on the South North Electric Works Water uh Tower down on Witch Court in Rowayton. And uh, the tower height that is spected out is over the current allowable uh tower height that is in the planning and zoning, which it was fifteen feet. For this tech change, I believe, would allow us to um go above that height requirement um and allow us to fi- finalize the uh, the contract for this particular uh project and move forward.
Okay, uh, any, any questions for Lieutenant?
I have a quick question. Did you say fifteen feet is the present regulation? One-five?
I believe one-five is the current regulation. I believe one five is the current regulation, that's correct.
Yeah.
Does that work?
That's, that's above the tower height.
Yes, yes, off the tower, I'm sorry.
Yeah, otherwise, no.
Any other questions? All right, if not, can I have a motion to?
We have to open it to the public, Louis.
Oh, I apologize. You know, I, there's only one member of the public. That, that's why I didn't go to an explanation. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Brian, you want to explain?
Sure, so you hit the, the one member who's still here, hit the, hit the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen if you'd like to speak on it.
Mister Chairman, I should, it would be good to note for the record, even though it wasn't required, we did work with Lieutenant Blake on getting neighbor notification to the abutters, so we did let them know this was going on because even though it's a text amendment, the intent is going on a specific property, so we did have the abutters notify.
I appreciate that the staff did that.
And then I will pull up again, same thing that we did referring to application to deep.
Okay.
And we did refer it to Harbor, who found it consistent with the Harbor Management Plan and then to Wes Cog, who had no additional comments.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
All right, Richard moves, Tammy seconds. Can you pull up the resolution, please? Okay, we, any questions about the resolution? If not, let's, let's go to a vote. I think we can do this with a raise of hands. All those in favor? Any opposed? And no, any abstentions? No. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Lieutenant Blake.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you all, all commissioners for your time tonight, appreciate it.
Okay. Let's move on to the final item of Business twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight S P. Jessica J. Edward, twenty-five Van Zandt Street. Proposed adult daycare center use within existing building. Miss Edwards, as it, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. As far as I can tell, there's no public here, but let me just quickly go through how we conduct a public hearing. First, we will hear from the developer or proposer during which commission members can ask questions. When the presentation is completed, we will open it up to the public. We don't place time limits on how long members of the public may speak. We ask that you provide your name and your address. If you're a member of the public who wishes to speak. After everyone has had an opportu- who wishes to speak has had an opportunity to do so. We will turn it back to the developer or proposer for comment on what we've, what's been heard by the public. After which we will close the public hearing and take action. All right, with that, Miss Edward, I turn it over to you. You are muted.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well today, and I'm not going to take up too much of your time. I do have Brian Clark. He is, he's been here every step of the way. He's going to help me to facilitate and represent the facility. But I am the founder of Caring for Seniors Adult Daycare Center. And I just, I want to give the seniors additional options so that they're not within their homes and they can come out, they can socialize, they can be in a safe environment. They, we can embrace independence and I, you know, of course, I'm going to turn it over to Brian because I'm not familiar with this platform, and he is, and Brian, thank you so much.
I don't know if anybody can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right, good evening. Thank you for your time and and all of the community service that we all have done and are continuing to do. With that being said, I represent Miss Edwards as her real estate broker. Depending on who's on here, Mister Baker, Mister Cleppins, everybody in the city pretty much knows my name and knows what I do here for the city as well, but regardless of that, this is something that the city needs, honestly. We're looking at an aging community of two to three years per year per elder person is what is projected right now. With that being said, on a personal note, I have a family member that just lost her husband and went to her doctor. And her psychologist said she needs to have more interaction. And with that being said, she's actually depressed. And that's what they diagnosed her with is depression because she hasn't, she, all she had was the past year and a half, the two years of taking care of her husband on a deathbed. And Mrs. Edwards is going to provide that for our elder community. The, the, the space that we found her with, with W E B and Wynn and is perfect. I think the location is perfect. It provides accessibility to I ninety-five, to the train station, to to what have you, what we need for this facility. It is a active need in our community, I believe. With that being said, I I I have a, you know, I do a ton of work in the community as far as on the commercial aspect of real estate. I'm also doing hopefully we bring, bringing you a project with a, with a couple of daycares as well for adolescents, not just adults. But we also look to make Mrs. Edwards successful in this, this aspect, so. And question wise, I I I think there is no questions that this needs to pass for our community, and we need it. Again, I also was the, the person to help bring the Performing Arts College to the, the city as well. So, and that, and that zoning changed, you helped with the East Avenue dorm room, so. I'm here to, to better our community and want to see our community grow. And that's, that's pretty much why I'm here is to just be a, you know, a, you know, a, a positive influence. That's all. If you have any questions for me, I'm, I'm open as well.
Darius?
Yes, so it says the premise of the, of business will be to provide social programs. Can you convey to us what the social programs will look like?
Yes, so I do have, I'm just, I've been working on some of the activities. We have yoga, exercise in the morning. We have a resting area for some of the residents if they get, become a little bit tired throughout exercise, so we do have a resting area where we have a large TV for them to watch, you know, some older movies. We have bingo, we have computer stations where residents will be able to learn how to utilize the computers. Where we're going to have some instructors, which is the CNAs. They'll be partaking and participating in those activities with them. We'll probably have some outings as well to leave the premises, to, you know, take walks and just embrace independence. So the purpose of them being social is just to interact with each other, get them out of the house and give them quality of life.
Ms. Edward, are you familiar with Elder House in Norwalk?
I am.
Oh, okay, good. Can you tell me, are there local health department standards or state health department standards that apply to elder daycare?
Miss Edwards, can I jump in on this?
Yes.
Thank, thank you for asking that question. We have, we are in accordance and we're working towards all of that with the health department and with the Fire Marshal as well. They have signed off on this meeting for us to be here to move forward with the, the approval. So we, we are, are definitely moving forward with their recommendations and requirements. So again, Mister Baker has been an important cog in this wheel to, to help us move forward. Mister Broderick is not on the call, but that's okay. We are doing what they're asked of, or what we're asked of, period, to, to move forward with this process. And that's why we're here tonight, not to take anybody's time, but to, to get the blessing, honestly.
Mister, Mister Clark, am I correct in assuming that the space you will be using at twenty-five Van Zandt is not part of the space that we previously approved for their, their proposed school?
So that, that, that has been a misunderstanding throughout this entire process. Because although there's different zoning and, and in conversation, I guess, I don't know Mister Baker or Mister Cleppin can step in, but it, it, although the building has been zoned a certain way, it has been our understanding that it's okay to put different facilities within this, this, this building and especially the zoning. With that being said, I believe there's also an ice cream facility trying to go into the upper floor currently as well. So I know there's, I know there are lots, and again, in speaking to the owner of the property. That's the understanding that we've had, and it's been unfortunately, the misunderstanding throughout the city that because it was zoned one way, that it can't happen, and that's why we're here tonight, so. With, with knowing the location of the property and knowing the zoning regulations, this should be allowed. And, and also honestly, on top of that, it's, it's needed in our city. You know, Elder House does give a certain service, but the, the type of service Mrs. Edwards is looking to provide is, is way beyond what is, is needed for us already.
Thank you. And Steve, why is this before us this evening?
So, so how the I one zone is written, technically, adult daycare is listed as a special permit use. There's, hasn't been a special, a special permit issued for the use on the property, so technically, although it's a small square footage in the grand scheme of things, it technically needs a special permit from you guys.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Questions? Go ahead, J J, and then Tammy.
Is, is this facility, is this facility solely for the use of recreation and not medical?
Yes, correct. It's a social model, it's not skilled.
And, and, and how many employees do you factor in?
So we're, we're going to work up to occupancy, so for every seven residents or participants will have one C N A.
So one to seven?
That is correct.
Um, will there be any medical, will, will there be any restrictions as far as mobility and as far as cognitive learning for your your?
The center?
Thank you.
One of the requirements is that we, we need to make sure that the PCP, Private Care Physician, provides a, a letter or a documentation an order indicating that it's safe for them to be in this type of environment.
And I'm going to interject quickly, Jessica, for your, on your sake, if, if you can speak to your background and what you've have done in the past years for your past career to to help them understand that your understanding of, of knowledge.
Of course. So for the past eighteen years, I've worked in nursing homes, assistant livings and adult homes. Currently, up to last week, I resigned from my position as Vice President of Compliance and Operations. And I was over twenty-seven properties in New York. And I, I wanted to go full force and focus on this journey and making a difference with the residents here in Norwalk, Connecticut, the greater Norwalk, Connecticut. So.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Do, um, two quick questions. Is there any outdoor space that your participants can utilize?
There's, at the moment, I would say no, right, Mister Clark? We have a private parking lot, but I don't feel safe for them to be in the parking lot as a area for them to have an activity. But as we grow and we look into different spaces, then I'll, I'll be here before you.
Okay.
But we will be having some of the residents go into Y M C A for a membership and I do have a company vehicle to transport.
Thank you. How many, if you're at capacity, how many people would be able to go to your facility every day?
I'm waiting for the Fire Marshal to give us permission for the certificate of occupancy. So right now, we're looking at approximately twenty, but I don't have clearance yet on the number.
Okay, so approximately twenty.
Yeah, so, so ultimately, we're looking seventeen to twenty-five, it's up to Mister Broderick or what he's going to give us. But overall, within the same facility, we hope to occupy another square footage that the question came up is outdoor space that will give us an outdoor facility where people can, you know, dine or have some type of activity outside. The ultimate goal is obviously to prosper, right? And, and, and do the right thing by our community and, and hopefully bring a facility that is way over needed for the lower Fairfield County area.
Sorry, one other quick question. Would the zoning regulations require that it be ADA accessible?
That's what, that's in the works currently, that's in the works currently as well.
I'd like to.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I don't have a question. So it sounds great, good to me, and much needed. I would add that the Vets Park, Veterans Park is a lot closer than what people think when they drive down Van Zandt Street. So it's only two blocks. I mean, you walk whatever that size, I should know the name of this street. It's literally, because I've always been surprised at how close it seems when I'm in Vets Park and I turn around, I'm like, that building is right there. So the park obviously has, you know, huge open space for use, and I'm just throwing that in there as a comment in that if that was workable, either walking or a van or whatever, but the, the park is huge.
No, that's, that, that is a great observation as well. I appreciate that. In, in, in your correct. My joke is the only time I left Norwalk was to go to college and it sucked me back in. So I'm here and I'm helping Jessica navigate all these aspects of our, our city and, and, and use of, so. Again, one of the components I'm here on the call tonight is to be a big component of hers and also I, it, I, I don't even think I told her yet, but I have potential to clients for her already, so. With that, with that being said, this, this city is in need of this. We have the great city, a, 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 a park's close to, to where she will be. And yeah, Vets Park is underutilized in my mind as, as a whole for our city, so it'll be great.
Anything further? All right, if not, we'll close the hearing.
Open the hearing.
My apologies. And it's not even nine o'clock. We'll open the hearing to the public. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Brian, please explain how they can do that.
Sure, so for anyone from the public, if you'd like to speak, you use the raise your hand feature, it's at the bottom of your screen. Give Mr. Brown about ten seconds and all right, I don't think so, Louis.
Okay. Um, a- a- any, uh, final comments, Ms. Edward?
No, I just, I, I appreciate everyone's time tonight. I know it's getting a little bit late into the evening, but I, I appreciate you guys taking my, my, my hearing on.
Thank you. All right, with that, uh, we'll close the hearing and, uh, we'll move on to action. Um, Steve, do we have a resolution on this? Or Brian, do we have a resolution? Uh, thank you. There are motion to, um, approve the resolution. Uh, Mike?
Yep.
Mike, Mike makes, uh, motion to approve. Darius, did you second? Darius seconds. Uh, let's, uh, again, fairly significant, uh, project here. Um, let's do a roll call.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis? Mr. Rowena?
Uh, yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
All right, unanimous.
Okay, uh, unanimous, um-
Jessica, your smile says it all.
Thank you.
Not to say anything else.
Have a good evening.
Have a good one and best of luck to you.
Thank you so much.
All right, uh, let's move to, uh, approval of the minutes of the, uh, July twentieth meeting. Um, I believe everyone but, uh, Richard can vote on this. Uh, motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve.
Okay, Darius moves. Tammy seconds. All those in favor, show of hands. Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, uh, one abstention. Uh, minutes are passed. Uh, Steve, you wanna? Would you like to speak, uh, perhaps starting with an update on the, uh, industrial waterfront study?
Sure, I, I turned my video off because my connection is really bad for whatever reason. I'm not ignoring you. Um, yeah, so last night, the, uh, committee that's looking at the waterfront study met. Uh, the draft report was sent out a few weeks ago. Um, I would say I was pleasantly surprised that there were very few questions or comments. So the Sultan is making, there were a few edits we wanted to make before it goes out to the broader public. I, I anticipate, I think probably within two weeks, it'll come out and I'll forward it to you guys to review. The next step in that process will be to amend the plan of conservation and development to incorporate the plan. I anticipate the zoning changes probably get done when we do the broader zoning rewrite. So they won't be like, unlike the industrial zones, which is happening at the same time, that'll kind of follow its own, um, its own path. Speaking of which, I was at the Economic Community Development Committee of Council for the first hour and a half or so of your meeting. The industrial zones, um, changes went through, uh, this goes on to the full council. I'm not sure if it's next week or the week after. So pending that vote, we'll, I, I think that your public hearing on those changes will occur in September. Um, so we'll start that formal process on that. Uh, let's see, I'm meeting tomorrow with the consultants to go over the zoning to see, I can get a firmer timeline on when the next set of edits will be done, so we can, you know, move that process forward. I've been talking with, um, Mario Capola in Corporation Counsel's Office on, I think we found a little money to have an outside attorney do a, a second look at the regulations as you guys are looking at it, just to make sure we didn't go astray of state statute. So that'll occur. So that's kind of a lot going on. Um, and just a quick reminder, you guys, your next meeting's on the seventeenth, and we have scheduled, um, a special meeting as, as we discussed on the twenty-fourth, at which time you'll have the public hearing on Wegmans and the public hearing on the ADU legislation. So it's kind of, and there's plenty of stuff coming behind that, so don't get too worried.
Okay, uh, comments from commissioners?
I just have a quick question for Steve.
Go ahead.
Um, whatever happened with the, uh, I guess I'll call it a seminar, um, for the sitting commissioners.
In terms of overall training or anything?
Well, I, I was, you, we, we seem to be involved in a lot of special permit applications and I was really interested in hearing, um, especially with regard to the reloop of requirements, although we probably won't get another one of those for a while. Uh, but I, I, I had thought that there was, that there was something out there that we were gonna be getting some notice on.
I can't think of a specific topic related one, but I know we, we talked about particularly at the time when the, 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 was the conversations about the merger of the two commissions was going on about training and there is, um, language in, in the zoning enabling legislation that was passed in October of twenty-one that does require commissions to go through a certain amount of hours of training. I think that kicks in in January of next year. So the, I mean, it's definitely something we need to think about and, you know, any suggestions you have are helpful and we can look at all the avenues available. There is also, um, some training that the Connecticut Bar Association does for lane use commissioners that we've sent commissioners to in the past, and we've also done some in-house training with, um, if you remember the branch of UConn that came down clear. Uh, they've come down a couple of times and done some training. So there are definitely some things we can do in-house and look at outside sources as well.
Well, we've, we've also had training by, uh, Mario, uh, on issues, um, uh, related to, um, uh, our responsibilities and the law surrounding those responsibilities. Um, and it might be helpful to do that again.
Was that before I came on? Cause I, I don't remember being invited to that.
Um, you know, uh, Richard, it was so long, I just don't remember.
Hmm.
Um, but I found, I found it, uh, helpful personally. Um, Steve, you and I can talk about that offline.
Sure. Something is on the back room.
One other technical question. Um, I think that the zoning commissioner has aged out after two terms, right? Six years, is it?
No.
Or three times two?
I think now, under the new regulations, there are three terms that everybody-
Is it three one-year terms then?
No.
Three three-year terms, I believe.
I just wondered whether, you know, starting over again on the Planning and Zoning Commission brings you to year one or-
Yes, it brings you to year one.
Is that right?
Yes, it, it, it is, it is correct. Yeah.
So I could be here back in my eighties. They also didn't tell you that you can't actually resign. You're actually stuck. It's like, it's, it's, it could be considered a prison sentence if you really-
Galen, can you give us a real, uh, quick update on the bylaws?
Yes, uh, Darius, uh, Mike and I met, we were the committee, and I didn't realize Steve Kleppen was also on the committee. So the three of us met, discussed a proposed draft. I, we did the draft in accordance with our meeting and sent it out to Darius and Mike via email. Uh, I want them to quick look at it and see if it does in fact reflect what we met, what we decided when we're at, and correct typos because I know they're there waiting. Uh, I will send that to Steve Kleppen along with sort of an explanation of what we were, what we were thinking. Uh, we can, will then be in a position to forward the draft to the, uh, commission, to the entire commission.
Terrific. Thank you, Galen.
Adaption.
Um, we, we have, uh, had a very long history of, uh, working well together. So thi- this goes back beyond uh, the establishment of the, uh, new commission. Uh, I know that, uh, the Planning Commission, uh, members, uh, with very limited exception, um, have worked well together and, um, from what I observe among us and certainly the previous, uh, zoning commission, um, uh, we've, we've all worked well. Um, but tonight for the first time, uh, I thought there was, um, uh, just a little too much, uh, volume and a little too much heat in our, uh, conversation, uh, regarding, uh, the school. I mean, I respect everybody's, um, 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 desire to speak, uh, on, um, any, uh, application before us. Um, but it seems to me, we hear so many emotion uh, filled comments from the public that we should work very hard at trying to keep that emotion out of our own comments. Um, because what we do in, in, um, most respects is much more important, uh, than what, what the public does. Um, they, um, have free rein. Uh, they can say what, uh, they want. Uh, in some cases, we know it's absolutely not true. In many cases, it's irrelevant, uh, regardless of the passion behind it. Um, but we shouldn't, we should never behave that way. And, um, Yeah, go ahead, Galen.
I disagree with you, Luke. I think that our discussion tonight, people felt pretty passionately about it, but nobody was in plight. Nobody cut, was, uh, uh, people spoke cautiously about it, but they didn't, I think, crossing the line of, of abusing anybody in the public or any other commissioner.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
Yes, I know.
But it, but, but in my view, it came, it came too close. Um, and that it, it shouldn't come that close. We have to, we have to work together. Um, and, um, I, I think we have to work hard um, at, um, uh, making, making sure that, um, um, we can continue to work together, um, even when we feel passionate. I mean, I, you know, uh, on, on this particular issue, it wasn't difficult for me because um, I didn't have exceptionally strong feelings, uh, about it, which, you know, I tend to speak too much as it is, um, which is, which is why I, I really didn't comment much uh, on, uh, on, on, on the school, nor was I terribly upset that, uh, uh, it wasn't, uh, approved, although I thought in strictly speaking in terms of the regulation, um, perhaps it should have been. Um, but, but, um, again, I, my interest is just in making sure that we, um, can all work collegially, uh, together. Um, and so I, 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 I thought it was important to say that. Uh, I don't know that it needs, um, uh, much, much discussion. Um, and, uh, just one other thing, uh, I'm away for the meeting on seventeenth. So this is a message for you, Mike. If I don't have a decent internet connection, uh, uh, you're gonna be running the meeting, just to let you know.
No problem.
Okay, yeah, you should just be prepared to do it. Uh, I'm, I'm certainly gonna try to be there. It's an important meeting. Um, we've got a couple of, uh, uh, fairly important, um, uh, items on the agenda. Uh, and I would like, I would like to, to be involved in it. Uh, so if I can, uh, I will be there.
And, and I did speak at higher volume than usual tonight, but, you know, I apologize to Tammy if I was engaging her in an impolite way, but I really also was passionate and, uh, I think actually Galen was trying to speak. So I apologize to Galen because I was not letting her speak, but I needed to say everything that I said.
Mike, I don't think you did anything that, 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 uh, that crossed the line. Um,
It's, it was definitely a difficult vote for me personally.
Yeah, no, and I, I understand that. Um, and, you know, had the full commission, uh, been here, it might have gone in a different direction, but the fact is, uh, uh, decisions are based on who's available uh, at any, uh, given meeting. So, uh, that's it for me. Uh, anything else from anyone else?
I was just gonna say JJ has a nice purple tint to her hair right now.
Yeah, she's had that all night. Is, is, uh, it's not her hair though, it's a reflection.
No, I know, it's, it's light effect, but it was pretty good.
Thank you.
To give you some, you got some fashion ideas out of the meeting tonight.
Oh, yes, jazz hands, right?
All right, it is now nine twelve. We have two choices. We can take our usual, uh, ten-minute break, or I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry, Tammy, did you want to say something?
I, yes, I did. Um, I feel that I would like to kind of clear the air. Um, I'm, I'm very sorry that my internet connection died on me at a, what I was consider, what I would consider a very critical moment, and I feel I didn't get to finish. I don't know exactly when you guys couldn't hear me anymore or when the applicant couldn't hear me anymore. So, uh, that was very frustrating for me. And, you know, it was just a weird thing. The power went out of my house, my neighbor's generator went on, the internet wouldn't come back. So, I actually did want to speak more about that application. I also wanted to hear what the other commissioners had to say. And I don't know if, I, I think you did answer my question and that perhaps two of the other commissioners didn't speak on the topic, and I don't think you did either, Lou. And I think this is a good process, but it's also a frustrating process because we sit here in our little Zoom land and we can't really have a good dialogue with one another. And I think we should have a good dialogue with one another because we are making really important decisions for our city's future. It's not just what we think. It is how it works with the P O C D. It is how it works with all these other plans. And we need to make an educated decision on what we're doing. Yes, it could be passionate on certain subjects because maybe we feel, you know, we all bring what we bring to the table. Um, but I was, I'm very disappointed in the way that went down. Um, and I guess I'll just stop there and I, I respect all of the people on the commission, but I, I would like us all to participate, and we were missing Steve Ferguson tonight and Brian just resigned, so we're down to a smaller commission. And that was a very important vote, and, you know, it went the way it did, so we voted. Um, but I, I, I think we need more involvement as commissioners deciding these things because we aren't really allowed to say how we feel. We just have to do it on, on what, what's in front of us, but that's, you know, it's important and I, I don't think we did a good job with that tonight. I really don't.
Tammy, I, I apologize if, uh, I didn't give you the opportunity to finish saying what you had to say.
I, I mean, that's okay. I think, uh, maybe perhaps everybody's mind was made up, but-
Uh, and, and I spoke, I, 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 I spoke to, um, support my vote, so.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that, Jackie. I would have liked to have heard what you had to say, and if Darius said anything, I would have liked to have heard what, what, um, he had to say as well. So I think we all need to listen to each other, um, and, and our reasoning is why, and I could go on, but I, I'll just stop there.
I agree with that, and hopefully we're gonna be having face-to-face at some time- I agree with that, and hopefully we're gonna be having face-to-face at some time.
Right.
These Zoom meetings, it just feels like a continuation of work for me.
And and I I feel if you are gonna vote, you should at least say why, you know, you should, I mean, it it doesn't have to be a complete paragraph, but come up with a reason why you support or why you don't support. I I agree with Tammy with that. A just a yay or nay every meeting, you know, it 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 doesn't really um um contribute to the importance, to the weight of these decisions.
JJ, I agree with you. Um, we, we have had, each chairman has his or her um uh own way of doing things, and we have had chairs that would go around the tape when we had a table, would go around the table and ask each person uh their opinion. You may remember that early on I tried that. Um, and uh my feeling was it didn't work for our particular group. Um, I could go back to that if, if uh, you know, people are comfortable with that. Um, certainly, I, it's, I'm not, I don't know whether it would change anybody's uh mind. Uh, but uh it might uh give us a um uh stronger um uh feeling i- if we either approve something or turn it down. Um, we may have more material uh to, if you will, hang our hat on.
This was an unusual night. My elec- my electricity flickered on and off, and I was off for a while because the, you know, the the uh wifi went down. It kept saying you're not connected to the internet. And I'm yelling, Stuart, where's my purse? I'm gonna find my phone, you know, and then it came back on. So, you know, I also missed some of the comment when my internet was down, but that's unusual. That's the first time it's ever happened.
Right. I was completely unaware of the fact uh that you were gone. I mean, normally, I can.
He didn't miss you at all.
Uh, I mean, I knew that Tammy was gone because she had been speaking and wasn't speaking anymore. But I, I simply didn't recognize that you were gone.
Yeah. Perhaps just a suggestion is that um one of either we should have our cell phone numbers because this technology isn't perfect. I I tried to look you up, Lou, just to say that I had lost my power. I tried right, looking up Brian if he was there, but I don't have their cell phone. So um I, I don't think any of us would abuse that privilege. But if we could share that information, then in a situation like this, you know, we could at least say, hey, sorry, you know, the dog ate the cord, the power went out, whatever it is, could you hang on for me until I get back into the meeting? Especially when we're about to vote on something really important.
Right.
Uh, but we all did say we were waiting for you to come back.
Right.
I, I appreciate that.
Uh, I can't speak for anyone else. I'm perfectly happy to share my, my.
You too.
Yeah. And Darius, you, uh, just for the record, you didn't actually speak about your, before your vote. Uh, I I don't think, because you're a man of few words, but you really mean it when you speak, right? So I'm just, uh, I I I know that about you, but I, but you did not speak, so there was no uh, you didn't miss uh Tammy, just so you know, you didn't miss uh uh Darius's uh uh opinion. Uh, and I, and uh that, and Galen, you spoke after you came back on.
Right.
But maybe before Tammy did.
Right.
I spoke before I went off, and then when I came back on, I said I'm back, but.
Just trying to make sure it was mostly uh JJ's uh 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 speaking that you missed, Tammy, I think.
Yeah, I did. Totally missed it.
Anyway, sorry.
We all have your phone. How do we find it when the internet's off? You know, because then I don't have my phone book.
A text, a text message would go through that we could at least the chairman or Steve or Brian that we're having a problem. That's all. I mean, a text message will go through if you, if your battery is charged on your phone, obviously.
Looks, uh.
We have that.
I know that Brian contacted Steve Ferguson, and we were expecting uh Steve to be here this evening. Um, uh, had we had his number, perhaps we could have called him.
Um, right, exactly, cuz.
Yeah.
So can we send out an email basically listing everybody's contact number and send it to everyone so we can just share it? I mean, you, you have it in one place, and if you need to contact someone, just find that email.
Why don't, why don't you uh just if you can, send me your cell phone numbers individually and all? That way, there's less traffic with it and that you guys, and then not everybody wants their cell phone out there, so we can keep it all tighter.
Okay, I'm not sure we're advocating putting it on the city website, but just that we could share it amongst ourselves.
No, right, right. And I'll, I'll make sure you have Brian in mine as well, so
That's helpful.
You know, if if there's an issue, you can call us right away.
Okay. All right, JJ, you want to uh repeat your comment from before?
Um, to, am I allowed to? I mean.
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm, I'm referring to the uh action you suggested.
Motion to the to.
To adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All right, all those in favor?
I, I.
Okay, enjoy the rest of the night. Hope to see you on the seventeenth.
Night.
Thank you. Bye-bye.